Welcome everybody to the Village of Ryback Planning Board Meeting for September 17, 2024. The first item on the agenda is-
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before we go on, there's something I'd like to say before we begin. During our last meeting, I allowed myself to lose my composure and I made an outburst, which was inappropriate, and I want to apologize for that. Any member of a public board can tell you that you can expect a full range of dialogue during meetings, from polite civility to nasty barbs to personal insults, but I do believe that my role as a public board member, my conduct should be held to a higher standard. And at that moment, I failed that standard. There's no justification, there's no excuse, and I want to apologize unconditionally for that. Thank you.
Okay, David Gould is coming, but I'm kind of making some reading. So, we have, David just sent out, did you see this, Victoria? Five-page resolution-
I saw prior iterations of it.
Oh, there are some tweaks here and there.
Should I come up?
Yeah, you can come up and you could take a look at mine.
Is it red marked or anything?
No, it's all clean. It's a clean copy.
Version three, clean copy of everyone's comments. I forgot one's different, though.
Thank you.
So, Victoria, he said, "Everyone receives it," and I thought he said, "Everyone," and I'm pretty sure he meant, "You too."
That's okay. I mean, I'm sure he just made small edits between the last two, so.
I can tell you the paragraphs that changed in the last one.
We should change the date.
That's what I'm gonna do. I was supposed to change the date, it should read September 17th and not September 3rd.
It says September 17th. Oh, the resolution-
That's the top of the resolution.
Yes, I saw that, September 3rd. Do you want to take a second to look at it, or?
Well, I think we still have the public, do we have the public hearing open?
Public hearing is still open.
Should we start with that and then I can read it, their comments?
Are there any additional comments about demolition permit for six Mulberry Street?
You all received the letter from Sarah Miller?
Yes, I did. I talked about that.
Earlier?
Yeah. So, I believe we're done here. Is there any other comments about demolition permit?
I think we can close the public hearing.
Do we have a second? I'll take a second. All in favor? Aye. And public hearing is closed. Now, do we, do you want to keep reading?
Well, I see the date also needs to be changed in the last whereas clause to say the public hearing is closed on September 17th, which is a minor-
Does David know six o'clock?
He does, did. However, the phone conversation we had prior to the meeting possibly-
Oh, he was home.
Delayed him, yes. He was not in his car driving here. So, he could be a few minutes late.
Excuse me, Victoria, just to follow you, this is the point you're making that on this whereas, it could be changed to September 17th instead of September 3rd?
Correct.
Okay.
If you want to wait for your attorney, I would be okay. If you want to take some of the other applications, we can come back to this one. It's up to you.
First, South Street isn't here.
And we could move, well, we could move on to the subdivision discussion and wait for David to get here. Or we could put it on here now. I don't think anyone has any objection to it. I think we all made our comments.
Yeah, David sent the resolution, so I don't imagine he has much to say.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's start with the demo resolution, let's stay on this topic.
Yes.
You guys are comfortable.
We have to write a subdivision resolution the next time.
Yeah, that we don't-
He has a draft.
We didn't get it.
Okay.
We didn't get it.
I don't have it.
Okay.
But we have this one.
We have this one.
I have no problem on, we need someone to make a motion to approve the resolution as amended with the date, which we can give to David.
Let's wait until, you want to be satisfied before we adopt it, right?
I'm just reading, but it approves the demolition of the annex and the partial demolition of the gym and removal of the antlers playground equipment and chess, so.
The main changes since maybe the draft you saw before, we just strengthened some of the findings in terms of some of the arguments that were made in support of the removal.
Okay, well, those are the board's findings, so that's fine.
So, did we get a motion to approve the demo?
I'll make the motion to approve the demolition permit for six Mulberry Street. Do we have a second?
I'll second there.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if you're lucky, resolution as amended is approved.
With those two dates.
With those two date changes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Well, the second item now is, public hearing which is still open on the subdivision. And we did get a letter today, I don't know if everyone got a chance to read it, from Sarah Miller, the Millers', that's the name of my ex-wife, but, no. Sarah Miller is very my ex-wife, yes. She doesn't have an H, though, so there's a slight difference. She's always happy not to have an H. So, I have been, from my point of view, I've always been concerned about the privacy of the neighbors, mainly Vicki Hack and the Millers, because they are the ones most immediately affected by that. And I am concerned, you know, that we have enough planting. I mean, it's wonderful the way it is to have a chain link fence with 10 feet of weeds that really give privacy to Vicki Hack and you, but that's all going to have to come down for the construction. And what do we build there? This will all be during site plan, what we build there in terms of fencing, in terms of evergreens, in terms of screening and noise protection. But we have to make a decision about how this land is chopped up. And we've had a lot of ongoing debates about the shape of mostly lot two and lot three and four and five. And I did not realize, as you pointed out, that there is nothing about a 10-foot buffer to the west side of lot five.
It's only on the Buckley School, lot three, according to the zoning amendment.
And so it stops-
Sarah, would you like to take a seat? You can explain, you can kind of summarize the comments or read them, and, or maybe are there any portions of your letter that you'd like me to display to, for your argument?
You want my copy of the letter?
Where did I set my notes? It'll be Friday. Yeah, so thank you for reading my letter. I'm sorry I didn't get it in sooner. This is just a portion of my comments. There's other things that pertain to the Millers, including that fence, but I kept that out of this letter. Vicki and Spiro are here tonight, too. They're also neighbors. And the western boundary affects them as well.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to make sure you knew that they were here. So, I start my letter by saying that we were very pleased all along, the last since 2021, that the developers and the trustees really included us in the conversation during the seeker review. I felt that was a real nice dialogue. And all along, we, Steve, my husband and I were very impressed that the developers were going to do this, they called it a privacy screening and a strategy and diagram. And I included that in the bottom half of this letter. So, we kind of, Steve and I got married to that. If you could go down a little bit. It's, I attached it. This is from January 19, 2023. And we were very pleased with that. You can see the Miller lot on the, on South Street there. And that 10-foot buffer really appeals to us. The developer in their letter showed the types of trees. And of course, this is all on their side, but it certainly affects us on our side. And yeah, so we really liked that. And we proceeded with this, in our heads at least. So, we were disappointed when the amendment reflected only the buffer around lot three, which is your Buckley School there. So, as it pertains to us, lot five can be wide open. There's nothing that I know of that says the new property owners have to protect any of the existing trees there. There's some very mature, healthy pines there now. So, but we feel like we're very exposed, not only to, you know, just as far as privacy. I have to say we're tree lovers. We, you know, we think this would really enhance the community and the neighborhood and the environment, all of that. That's how Steve and I feel. What else did I want to say? So, yeah, I kind of meander a little bit in my letter, because the law's the law. We know the buffer is not there now. It's only around lot three. But I really, really would like for you to keep in mind lot five. As it pertains to me, Vicki and Spiro might want to have you really look at lot one and two, which is behind their property. So, yeah. So, I kind of, in my letter, I tied it into the subdivision that you guys talked about last time, the golf club idea. I don't like that, because then everything's pushed to lot five. And I'm thinking, you're not going to be able to save those trees, or there's not going to be enough planting. Jeff, you said it last time. There's not enough room on this lot for all the plants, so I would like to make the trees priority.
You don't have a problem with taking down the chain link fence, right?
Well, like I said, that is another conversation altogether. I think we, the developers, planning and the community have to really talk about that. We, it's a little murky for me. Like, in the BSO amendment, it says something like, "May be taken down."
Yep. Chain link fences are not allowed in historic district.
Yeah.
So, those will be coming down as far as I'm concerned in the-
The only thing that's complicated is there's so much plant material growing through it. So, if you take it down, you take a lot of what is existing buffer today with it.
Right, but not the trees.
Not the trees, but the lower story.
Well, you're right, John. It is completely entangled with invasives, bittersweet, there's wisteria in there. There's not, it's all, you know, like stumps this big. Now, the previous owner, she had the house for 35 years, Leslie McNeil, she took lemons and made lemonade because she took all those invasives and kept cultivating them around that fence. And it's a beautiful buffer to our lawn. And I honestly would like to invite the planning board to come to our side and see what is happening on there and how it is back on. Victoria, you said last time, the neighbors want that, don't want to see that building. And Diane said, you know what, that, not everybody feels that way, but I think in our case, we don't want to see the building. We never want to. At one point, they had two Tupperware bins on top of the vents. We don't want to see that. But with the new, you know, you just approved the demolition. We're not going to see that, because what we're seeing is the gym. We're going to see the back of the Buckley School, you know, without the gym. So, that's not so much a concern, but we are going to have to come up with a way to buffer that parking lot from the Millers.
Well, there is a required 10-foot planted buffer-
Yes.
-around the parking lot in the building, the big building.
Yeah.
So, what you seem to be concerned in the letter is between you and lot five.
At this, my intention of this letter is that, correct, lot five. The fence is another letter.
All right. Well, I'll just say that it says in the historic district overlay that chain link fences shall not be allowed.
But Victoria, did you say that it's "may" or?
I believe, because, and I don't want to speak to all the neighbors, but some neighbors wanted, were concerned that if we took the chain link fence down, we'd be taking out all the existing growth. And so, I believe I can pull the language. There was an exception made that the planning board can consider whether portions of the chain link fence should stay so that the existing buffer remained. So, it's really a site plan issue.
Okay.
I think we'll get into it once, once we're into the weeds, so to speak, on site planning.
Is that green space, is that in the law behind lots one and two, that 10-foot buffer?
No, the buffer-
Neither one of them have it.
The buffer is around multi-family use. Generally, in the zoning law, there's no required buffer between residential uses, residential to residential. So, there's not required-
But there is a required 10-foot setback, right?
Yes.
So, anything within 10 feet of that, there's not going to be a building or anything else within 10 feet of that property line. Is the fence on the property line, as far as you know?
They surveyed it a couple of years ago, and I know the decker guy was there. It's 10 inches to the east of the property line, so.
Is that big, big tree that's on the front corner of your property is on your side?
It's on our side, yeah. And I even noted that in the photo.
But it's so dense, I can't see in the back what other trees might be on which side of the fence.
I've pointed them out here. The ones that are on the boundary are in that photo there. That's looking, on the, on the lot five here and looking west to our property. And all that other stuff is invasive. It's, and I have to tell you, since you have me up here, that property needs maintaining. I know the developers aren't here, but they own it. It has to be maintained. I wrote a letter to the mayor this week because I came across Tom of the Village Parkway Department pruning their trees.
I saw that, yeah.
I treat. Why are they using services to prune those trees? I included video of me in July ducking those trees. I can't walk on the sidewalk. I know people, neighbors like Jeff, trim the weeds that are growing through the fence. This really bothers me. I'm present some up here, I'm just telling you. It's up to them to maintain their property, just like everybody else on South Street, Mulberry Street, and in the Village. The section is D1 screening about, we're discussing the chain link fence. It says, "The planning board may require such fence to be removed along the side and rear of Buckley Schoolhouse where it finds that such removal replacement would improve screening." So, it's not required to be removed, but it may be. But it is required in other portions. So, you just have to read through that carefully. But again-
That's in site plan.
Yeah. I think I heard the comment here for subdivision, though, is that she prefers the option without the golf club. That's, yes, that is, that's true. But I did insert myself in that.
But that would depend on whether lot five gets bigger or smaller with or without the golf club. Because if the golf club isn't there, it might just add on the lot four, not, and change lot five, and the setback one way or the other on lot five would be still 10 feet, whether the lot is 8,000 square feet or 7,800 square feet or whatever. So, I'm not sure the golf club really affects your corner of the property.
No, but just as a comment that I, I'm happy that you guys are considering. I don't like the golf club. It doesn't make sense to me, for the three reasons I said in my letter. One, I think developers, that's prime real estate for them. I think that's the most valuable piece of property on the, on the plan. I think they should allow that. If I want, if I were going to buy a house there, it would probably be on the corner. I don't think that neighbors or kids are going to be using that as a golf club park or whatever you want to call it. Personally, that's just a personal opinion. And for me, it felt like everything would be shoved to five and, yes, you're right, John. I don't know the numbers and all, but I just felt like it's kind of-
When we get to site plan, we'll have to talk about this, because the way this is laid out, one, two, and five, the only player, the only place to have a barbecue, picnic table, you know, a trampoline, whatever, is on the septic systems behind one, two, and five, which is right behind Vicki and right behind you, you know. So, we're going to have to have good screening there and sound and fencing and evergreens and something to try to muffle. Somebody said, oh, you're living in the village, you do have neighbors. We like to try to give some privacy. This is from the houses, not from the big buildings. So, site plan has a lot of work to do and figure this out.
Normally during the subdivision, you don't do landscaping requirements. I don't think we've ever done that.
No, no. And it won't be talking about site plan for one, two, four, and five for some time and get to the next time.
And as we, I mean, with architecture, not landscaping, generally speaking, other than street trees, we've never-
Well, any construction, new construction, historic history comes onto, Jeff's house comes onto the purview of the planning board.
Yes.
Yeah, we have made, for some site plans, we have made recommendations. Not that the applicant had to comply with them, but in my memory, almost everyone did. So, you're right, we can't dictate landscaping. But we can recommend, we do.
So, we have to look at this, because, David, we, we all agreed on your revisions. There's only a mistake on the dates, which Victoria hasn't-
Yeah, we'd seen that run, and I saw that during the day.
And so, we approved it. So, the demolition permit is gone. So, now we're talking about the subdivision. We have some kind of agreement on this, so that you can make up a resolution for the subdivision.
Yeah, Victoria already drafted a resolution, but the detail, you know, the nuts and bolts in two filled in, so whatever we come up with, we'll go ahead and, are you looking for a subdivision resolution right now?
No, 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 next time. We have to come to an agreement on what we will be willing to-
Yeah, we've already got a starting resolution, and we just got to come up with what we want.
Because we, you know, we can't keep, you know, someone said moving the goalposts by adding more and more conditions. We have to, like what we have, and I think I expressed it, and that I was happy with the first plan. I don't think the golf club's necessary either. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
I don't like the golf club. I think the golf club is useless, the way it's shown in this version that they distributed.
Because Darren made a suggestion, and so they made it smaller according to Darren's suggestion.
And now it's like five and seven feet wide. It's not useful for anybody or for anything. And not worrying, what Sarah said, it's not for the neighbors at this point. It's for the people who live in the multifamily apartments to have some green space that's not hidden away from the neighbors, so that there'd be a place up front, a green space where people could sit outside and talk to the neighbors walking by and become part of the neighborhood. That's the reason for the corner green space. And primarily, because I don't think the entrance towards the building, for the building should be in the back, that that's not the first priority in the zoning law, that you want to be able to have some approach to that entrance that's not down an alleyway, what I consider down an alleyway only 16 feet wide. So, what I did was I proposed two alternatives.
We've gone through many iterations of yours.
And I thought what I did was a reasonable compromise, one that was showing a bigger corner piece that extends out to South Street, that would be usable space, and another one that doesn't extend out to South Street, but at least angles up to the entrance of the building, so that the building is evident from the street rather than sort of hidden around the corner. And I thought that either of those work from a point of view of accomplishing the goals, which I had, which was to provide some green space out in front of the building rather than only on the septic system behind the parking lot.
John, which one do you want to start with? So, for this meeting, we've got two, two documents from the applicant, and two documents from you. You've got your option one and your option two. Would you like to start with what you actually proposing at this point?
I'd like Victoria to present what they would like to have.
Okay, which, which one shall we start with, Victoria? There's two from David Ruff.
The one that shows the new layout. The other one was just showing the septic dimensions and she couldn't keep up with-
He just used an older version.
Couldn't keep up with all the lot line iterations. But that was, this plan was to answer Mr. Clark's earlier question about why they weren't evenly designed. And so you can see that there's a strip on the top of the other, which is why it extends down.
There. Which is the primary?
The primary, I think, is the black, and the secondary is-
It's like an odd configuration for the septic.
He went back per the last meeting, and this is what he provided for that lot. So, this is the design as he designed it, the primary and the secondary. So, that was the purpose of this plan. So, if you could go to the other one, please, Mr. President.
So, to be clear, that's not what you're proposing, that's just to help us understand septic. The next one you're going to show us is your current proposal.
This was for the septic. He put the septic on the other, on a different-
I understand, he used an older version. So, this was, we're done with that, if the question is answered on septic. So, now this is what you actually would like to do.
This is what he came back. I mean, honestly, the applicants would prefer not to have the golf pole at all and to just have the two lots extend all the way to the corner. If they were given the choice, that would be the option they would want to move forward with. However, they did propose, you know, last time they proposed the wider golf club, and then they cut it in half. It starts at seven feet and it extends to about 17 feet.
Some looked at Darren's suggestion, too.
To try and accommodate comments from number Davidovich. So, this is up for discussion. And I think tonight, what they'd really like to do is have the board vote on a plan, whether we're going to move forward with, you know, their concept, which was bringing four and five all the way to the corner with no green space, or one of the alternatives they've proposed. Okay. So, I mean, tonight, we'd like feedback on this most recent alternative that starts at seven and that widens to 17. And the applicants are on their way. I don't think they got the memo that the meeting time had changed, though.
Victoria, when you say seven and 17, do you mean the east-west distances on the width of the flag along South Street and along the property lines?
Correct. It's seven feet along South Street, and it widens to about 17 feet.
This is seven, and this is 17?
Yes.
We could just call up Jeff and see what he has on that, too.
The dimensions are on the larger, the one to the right. Yeah. So, I mean, part of the, I don't want to say the issue, but part of the discussion is that there are competing goals of wanting some open space on the corner or wanting to continue a pattern of development where houses continue to the corner. And that's why there's tension even amongst the board members.
So, Charlie made a couple of suggestions, which you could show. There are problems, but I have problems.
Which one should we start with?
I'll start with one, I guess. So, this one has a significant corner space. And see, I put a hedge around it, so it wasn't a shortcut or a neighborhood hangout. It was something that feeds to the entry, which should be facing the street, as according to the code. And it provides a place where people could sit outside in the context of the neighborhood rather than only in the backyard screened off from everybody. So, it makes the people who live in that building part of the neighborhood rather than isolated from the neighborhood, with their entrance by the parking lot and their green space back in the back. So, that was the first one. And you can see, the entry is where the historic entry is, onto the building. That's where the current porch is. I suggested that it become more of a enclosed entry, but in the same location. And that way, I think it satisfies the provisions in the, in the Buckley School overlay district, that the entry face the street.
May face the street.
No, it says it will face the street unless the board finds that it's impracticable. And I don't find there's any reason why it's impractical.
The problem I have is that it's our job to design the outside of the building and the grounds. The inside is under the purview of the applicant and can adjust it. Just by moving the entrance here, you're not paying attention to the inside of the building. This requires a complete redesign. These steps come into someone's bedroom. I mean, ask how they configure, so that has to be...
The building has an entrance there. The outside of the building includes the entrance. So I consider that entrance to be part of the historic structure. And by taking it, closing it off, changing the window pattern, and moving it to the back, you're changing the historic quality of the building. That's the exterior. And yes, if you put the entrance in that location, you will have to change the first floor of that building. But that's just at this point a paper plan. They can change the configuration of their apartments inside. You know, I have real doubts from a building code perspective, and I'm not a building code expert, so I'll ask the architect when he gets here, I guess, how you can have a building with three floors, two and a half levels, with one entrance and one stairway from a fire perspective. How do you get out if there's a bike launch, you know, electric bike fire in that bike storage room by the back door? You jump out your windows from the third floor?
No, that's how you just have to...
No, but the point being is that I think that there should be an entrance that faces the street, that's in the code, and it should be in the historic location, which I think we should pay attention to the historic quality of this building, which has the entrance on the south side of the building. If you move the entrance, it's taking away something that's part of the historic integrity of that building.
The original entrance was on the north by Market Street.
Oh, there were two entrances.
Well, it disappeared in 1940.
Right.
So this is, this is a rear entrance, but became the only entrance without the gym.
Presumably, it was there in 1922, when this building was built, or whenever it was built, because that was, that was a main entrance from the parking lot, if it was the way it used it there or the way it is now.
Do you have the existing photographs of the building in the pile? I think it'd be helpful to look at the entrances on the side of the building. I believe there's two right now.
Yeah, one to the gym and one to the main portion of the building.
Right.
But for this discussion, it seems to me that that's a site plan discussion. But now, are you bringing it up because...
Yes, it's too late if we approach this.
Because it falls into the recommendation for the green space?
Yes.
Do you wanna go talk about your other option?
That was mine to show, just so that we have in the discussion. This provides less green space, but it provides a significant number of square foot of green out in front of the building next to the entry. And the entry not only is in the historic location, it hides the new piece, which is the, which is the handicap ramp.
You also added a shared driveway into lot two.
Well, you know, that's, you know, if that's a site plan issue or not? Probably not. But yes, I think there's too many driveways on the north half of Mulberry Street, and that they could come up with a way to limit the number of driveways. That's also in the code as a possibility for us to consider, and there's certain benefits to that. Under their proposal, they have one, two, three driveways and a half a block, which to me is not good from the neighborhood's perspective. It's not good from sidewalk conflicts. It's not good from on-street parking near the church. There's a lot of reasons why you wanna limit driveways.
It's the applicant's position that that driveway, sharing with the multifamily use, so creates a lot of headaches, because you have to have coordination with plowing in the winter, and it makes it less desirable as a lot. Most people like to have their own driveway, because they wanna park in it and they want to use it for playing, and that complicates that.
Well, they could park at the portion of the driveway that's on their property. I showed that...
But they have to back out into some of the traffic.
Well, they wouldn't have to back out. I was gonna show a back out spot here, so they can back out and go that way. That's perfectly, I forgot to get that in. But there's no shared responsibility. There's a property line. Building plows their own driveway, just like anybody else, you ply your driveway.
I also just wanna correct, there are two entrances. There's a ramp on the back and a ramp on the side.
Yeah, but the ramp on the side goes to the basement, so the people from the third floor would have to go to the basement in order to get out the second ramp, the second door, which is hardly ideal from a fire perspective. And they would have to go down one long stairway. It's not even a switchback stairway. It's a, it's a long, straight-up stairway, you know? So how the hell do you...
They may be at the front door. We can talk to him about those issues, but...
That's up to Ken and other people. The only issue tonight is the subdivision, which is only affected by this section here. It's like Kashmir on the Pakistan Indian border. Does this section belong to lot three or lot four? That's the only issue that we have to deal with with the subdivision.
Unless, I don't know for sure whether the, a shared driveway like that or a driveway easement is also part of the subdivision.
I don't know.
So in both, David might go back, but in both of these cases, there's a corner green space, one larger than the other.
Right. And I think this one provides access to the entry, an open sense of that, you know, welcoming to the building rather than down a narrow strip to an entrance that's hidden in the back. And it doesn't get involved with any sort of corner cutting thing. And it provides enough green space that those people, I think, would feel like they're part of the neighborhood rather than only isolated in their backyard.
That makes a lot of sense, a lot of sense. It becomes, it becomes part of the neighborhood when people can actually visualize the building, and would also help maintain its historic status. If you completely close it off, who even knows is there? Anyway, I think you're heading in the right direction.
No, we could get comments from the public once we...
So far, we had one for and one against the corner, but...
Well, she was against the previous corner. She hadn't seen these.
Oh. Think about that for a minute. But we, that's our only thing that's holding us up now, because we have to make, it's the corner, that corner has to be part of the lot line.
Right.
And we have to talk about easements later on, stairs, or where the staircase would be. But we have to come to some decision about what lot four is going to look like.
And I think it's crucial in the course of that subdivision decision, if we think about where the entrance is gonna be, because if the entrance is gonna be where I'm suggesting it should, and where I think the code says it should, and where historic district says that it should, then there should be some visibility of that entrance from the street rather than down a narrow walkway.
So, I mean, again, redesigning of the entrance does impact the entire layout of the building, so...
Well, the second floor it would. You can still do the third floor the same.
Well, that's more, I think that's course plumbing. This thing is stacked.
Yeah, we'd have to change things, but I...
The three floors are stacked with plumbing stacks and whatever.
The first floor uses the central hallway going to the entrance. So if you did the second floor like the first floor in the front, you would be stacking.
Yeah, you'd change both floors.
Yeah, they would be, you know, it'd be whether one, whether two matches one or whether two matches three, either way.
I just, but there's, I mean, I do want the applicant to come before we make the decision, because he can comment on whether it's possible for layout, because we are required to put a certain number of units in the building, and there were certain, you know, numbers of bedrooms proposed and certain configurations, and so we wanna make sure that that can still be achieved.
So there are a couple of things that I've heard in the last couple of meetings, a couple of concerns, and I wanted to ask some questions about them. We've heard some concerns that if we put a public space in the corner there, it would be treated like a public park, and some concerns that people would be gathering there, and it might violate the privacy of the owner of lot four.
Or the neighbors on South Street.
Well, yeah, I know, David, you had a concern about the skateboarders, but, so we also heard concern a few times about the fear that there will be a high fence running along the side of the corner lot. In fact, we heard that not only about lot four, but I think in much earlier meeting, David Miller, you mentioned that about lot one. One of the ideas that was thrown out on the table at the last meeting was to address some of these concerns through a deed restriction. Can we talk a little bit more about that?
So, I mean, that's, that would be essentially what this plan is, where the green is. Instead of drawing the lot line there, they're willing to propose a no-build zone, so that it stays open space. When we thought about it a little more, though, what ends up happening is if they move their, they can't put their fence there, so they move their fence in, you know, 17 feet, then there's kind of that no man's land where no one's really mowing it or taking care of it. You know, they could be required to take care of it, obviously, it's their property, but that's what happens when you move your fence in.
If I buy, you know, lot one, I would put a six-foot fence along East Market Street. I have a six-foot fence along East Market Street. I'm running behind my house, because I don't be sitting out there having a barbecue with friends, people walking their door to a festival, and the only space for lot one to have that is all the septic tanks, and people be walking up and down to the farmer's market through them sitting out there having lunch with friends and family. So they will put up a six-foot fence along that.
It'd have to be 10-foot back.
But finish your thought, Victoria.
Or at least the front plane of the building.
Because you're now saying you're gonna add it to lot three.
I was saying, we could, if that's what the board wants.
And that would solve the no man's land.
But, you know, it's an option. We thought it might be, if the intention was for people to use this, then to leave it open so that the management company or whoever's managing it would be responsible for it.
So in lieu of the deed restriction, they're proposing to add it to lot three, which kicks the fence back, but provides a vehicle for lot three to mow the lawn and not the occupant on the corner.
I was thinking more in terms of, is there an option on a deed restriction related to fencing? In other words, along East Market Street and along Mulberry Street, could, I know the current code doesn't say this, but could we say you can't put a fence within three feet of the sidewalk? We see cases where there are fences, some pretty high fences, that run along the edge of the sidewalk, and that's pretty constricting. The other thing I'll mention is, in terms of the amount of, in terms of the view of the front of the building in lot three, one of the things I proposed in the last meeting was to move the line on the southern end of lot three, three feet closer to South Street. And I proposed that specifically for the reason to allow more open space, more green space, and more buffer, not just for greenery, but to the view of the building. That was one of my proposals in the last meeting. Another proposal I made in the last meeting, and it's kind of interesting, because the daily catch chose to publish some misinformation about me personally regarding lots one and two, kind of implying to their readers that I was in favor of the applicant's proposals for the lots. I was never, ever, and I am not now, in favor of the proposals. Anyone that wanted to fact-check, if they were in the meetings or go to the video, I started suggesting in the earliest meeting that lots one and two would be 75 feet wide. I proposed that because, for two reasons, which I stated repeatedly, a buffer to the north side of the lot three for more greenery and more visual softness instead of that hardscape. Secondly, to allow smaller lots and smaller buildings, which I believe the town wants. People may disagree with that. What I did in the last meeting was I changed that and offered a compromise. I said, okay, not 75. If you look at the meeting, you'll see, I said, why don't we do 77 feet for lots one and two? Because it will still allow reasonably sized houses. It would not compromise the ability to put septic fields in, which I confirmed with the engineer in that meeting. But I would go even further. In the meeting before that, when you were talking about the width of the driveway running along the north side of the building in lot three, was originally 20, which this actually shows, no, no, that's 27.
This is not, this is not the new plan.
Yeah, we should take this one off.
But in the last, in that meeting, not the last meeting, the prior one, I think it was John, you suggested five-foot area for a walking path on the north side of the building, only an 18-foot wide lot, sorry, driveway, and a 10-foot buffer, which would be 32 feet.
That was exactly what was proposed.
No, that's not.
It is. Can we pull up the plan? I don't wanna relitigate lot one, to be honest.
Yeah, let's not debate, but that's not, and that's why I proposed a different one. But if it was 32 feet, I think that would be okay. I still hold with moving a more buffer space of three feet closer to South Street on the south end of that, and I would have to say, after hearing all the arguments, I'm not in favor of what might end up like a public park on the corner of South and Mulberry. But I think we should talk about, is there a way to minimize the impact of high fences along the side for both lot one and lot four? That's my proposal.
Well, on the fence, John, don't we have a 38-inch restriction on corner lot fences?
No, a corner lot, you're allowed 6-foot fence.
You can have 6-foot behind the front plane of the house.
Well, I don't know, I'm looking, I just checked the code, and I'm looking at section seven, and it says, "The high defenses, gates, walls, and vegetative screening located within a corner lot are curb-cut sight charitable, shall not exceed 38 inches above the lowest adjoining finished grade." So I read that to mean that corner lots are restricted to 38 inches, and then there's the other discussion about beyond the front plane of the building. So I think that covers us.
So you're saying that would apply to both lot one and lot four?
Yes.
Is that...
I think from the front plane of the building back, that you can go to 6 feet.
Yes.
But both sides of the corner would be lower picnic-type fence or...
Well, they're dealt with two separate ways, but... So there's also that provision behind the front plane of the building within a corner lot or something. They're trying to contradict, yeah, I know we...
Darren, you have to have a low fence here until you hit the front panel of the building, then you go to 6 feet. And if I buy this lot, I put a 6-foot fence here, I put a 6-foot fence all the way up here, and I put a 6-foot fence here to give myself...
Well, what he's saying is, the code says on a corner lot, do you have to be behind the both front planes of the building? Is that how you read it?
That's how I read it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. A new fence that went up on Chestnut Street, it seems to violate that.
Yes.
Across from your office.
I missed.
Yes, there's a fence up there, and there's a fence further down on, I think it's Chestnut, that put a big fence right along Mulberry Street, a very high fence.
Yeah.
Very close to the side.
If that's the case, I think that solves the concern and the issue for both the fencing right up to the sidewalks, 6 feet high on both lots at one and lots four. And I think that would be great. And again, I wouldn't then suggest a deed restriction, and I stick with my proposal, which I think makes sense, to move the southern end of lot three back another 36 inches, three feet, to allow that more buffer space, and it won't compromise the ability to build the size houses there with the septic fields that are planned.
And let's say I'm wrong about that, right? I think at site plan stage, we could talk about a deed restriction if the fence...
I think we should be really, the village can't enforce deed restrictions. Deed restrictions are between private parties, and it's really hard 10 years down the line or whatever to keep track of deed restrictions.
We can enforce, the village can enforce it if we put it, there's two it, there's two things. One, it has to be in favor of the village, which you have to keep track of, but second, notes on subdivision plots are enforceable, and they run with the law, and they can be enforced.
But we have seen how enforcement... But we have seen how enforcement goes once it leaves the planning board.
I mean, that's what.
And if it goes five years down the line, it's even less so. So, I, I think we should stick, my feeling is that we should stick with the code, because we know we can enforce that. If we start doing all these side deals, then it'd be between private parties with us deemed as a third party, it just seems like we're really getting into unenforceable territory.
Fair, so, but if I heard correctly, a note on a subdivision plat is enforceable, and it's something that we can just put on there to say, the thirty-eight, recite the thirty-eight inch.
Well, certainly, we can cite the code.
Cite the code right on the spot.
You don't need a deed restriction to do that. And if indeed, now, they could put a six-foot fence, like here.
That's the front, that would, again, this isn't, oh, great.
Behind the front plane of the building. So, maybe we put the thirty-eight inch note.
But a six-foot fence ten feet back is not unusual in the village. That doesn't infringe on the sidewalk or the landscaping or anything. It's the ones that are right up against the sidewalk that I think are objectionable.
I mean, my fence is set back, there's four hemlock trees, and I planted a bunch of pastas, and when I go out there to clean up the leaves in the fall, I'm raking up bags of dog poop, because, you know, this back area is considered public access for, you know, doing whatever they need to do. And, you know, you can't go out there and police the backside of the house.
Aren't fences, though, subject to your CNA review?
They are.
So, anyone that wants to put up anything would have to come into this board first.
That's why I don't understand why the ones that are going up the way they are, but that's another's talk.
Okay.
But I, I hadn't had a chance to look at the fence law. You just read that a corner lot means you have two fronts, and you have to go to low fencing until, from, from plane of the building, and you can go to six-foot fencing. Or even seven foot under this code.
So, we have to come to some consensus on the five boxes, or we never get the subdivision done.
I'll finish, I'll finish mine then, and I'll just say this.
We haven't heard the audience.
Right. And, and, and we hear from the audience, and after that, if I were to make a motion, just again to clarify, my motion would be to move the southern border of lot three three feet closer. And without arguing what it was, the, the border on lot two from the building, thirty-two feet, I think that's what you originally suggested there, and then just make, by defining that thirty-two feet, then just split one and two widths in half, you know?
So, this, again, if you could pull up the, the plan, this is, this was just for the septic, so it doesn't match, but it is thirty-two feet. It's five, eighteen, and ten, that was what was discussed.
Right. I, I get that, I see on here twenty-seven feet.
But can you pull up the plans? I think this is what they're actually, like, asking us to approve.
Hold it. This one?
Yeah.
Actually, thirty-two feet.
Okay.
See, there's a dimension.
Okay, then.
There's a curtain there, too, that gives an extra foot.
I'm fine with that. Plus, moving the other one back, three feet.
I'm not, I'm not really, the, the three feet on the southern boundary, I'm just going to question again, like, what's the rational basis for that additional three feet? Because it, I think it really makes the backyards of those other houses less usable.
Well, I've given my rationale, I think it should be green space out front, that leads to the doorway, so that the doorway is visible and has a landscape setting in front of it.
Of cour-, but that's, that's the corner piece, you're not, you're not asking him to move the whole line three feet, the whole.
Well, I'm, I'm not proposing that at all, I'm, I'm proposing it stay where it is, except for the quarter leading up to the entrance.
Yes, I understand that.
Sorry.
And I was asking.
I'm sorry if I've been, it's very unclear what the time of this meeting was, but, John, can you just repeat what, what you're saying, so I understand?
He didn't, John didn't like the smaller one, he wanted it more sweeping, so that it was more convenient.
So, did you see the two alternatives?
I did, that you presented it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask David a question, because we're getting to impasse here. When someone presents a bill to Congress, they say, let's vote on the bill, I have an amendment, let's vote on the amendment first, yes or no? I have an amendment, vote on that, yes or no? Okay, so everybody agreed now, now we vote on the bill. Can we vote on whether or not we like Jeff's foot, or two feet, whatever it is? I don't know how can we do that?
We have to hear from everybody first.
We will, I, I just want to know, because we have to make a proposal for the five boxes, and I don't want to say, well, one person doesn't like one of the boxes, the other person doesn't like another box, then how do we get, then do we have like a three to, a three to two vote of the three people that like it one way and not the other way? I mean, I don't know how to.
Won't that, aren't those motions that we discuss in?
If you're asking about parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
The answer is, somebody on the board would make a motion at some point for a particular subdivision. At that point, anybody could also make a motion to amend that motion, and then we would take a vote on the amendment. And if the, if the amendment passed, and we had a new, a functionally new motion, that we voted on, and it failed, we'd have the original motion, and that's the way things go forward under parliamentary decision. We don't typically do it according to strictness, because usually you kind of have consensus. But if you want to know, somebody makes a motion, and then somebody just, everybody decides whether to try to amend it, and there's votes on the amendments, and if the votes fail, we vote the original motion, and when the votes pass.
We want to write up the resolution for this.
What I would suggest is, I mean, I could write a resolution, but the vote, to be meaningful, any motion or any amendment would, would reference a particular subdivision, and would probably the most effective thing would be to have a particular plat in front of us, rather than for me to try to in any way describe it in words. So, let's come, it should be a picture, perhaps, on the screen or in front of you, motion to approve that subdivision, and you could use words to make sure that we all are on the same page, and then if somebody wanted, they could, if they didn't like the motion, they can make a motion to amend it, and we'll vote on the amendment. So.
That's, that's a parliamentary decision, we have to handle that. So, democracy, so, the public here is still open, so we like some, any opinions from the public, as to which, we've already had one likes the corner on, on, on South, and one doesn't like the corner on South. How do other people feel about this?
I actually have a question. So, in the drawings we've seen, have we seen the sight line setback reflected? There is code already out there that says, on corner lots, there is a triangle that takes the, in effect, the, affects the lot development. Did, or did any of these drawings take that into account?
All. They all show the setback as ten feet minimum.
That, that's not what I'm talking, there's a calculated triangle, a sight triangle, and it's in the code and a memo.
If you have a ten-foot setback to the porch, it's going to meet the sight triangle on the corner.
Depending on where the porch is. I mean, if it's, if it's not.
The porch has to be after the ten-foot setback.
No, I understand that, I, I lived through it. So, I'm very aware. I think you're not understanding me. You basically have to follow the code to get that triangle, but ten-foot setback, depending on how the house is going to face, would make a difference. If it, maybe if it faced the South Street, it would take it into account. What if the owner wants to face Mulberry?
It's, it would be set back ten feet on both sides, and so therefore, it would meet the, the sight triangle. It would only be if it's closer to the road on one or the other corner. In this case, we have a ten-foot side setback, we have a ten-foot front setback minimum. So, when you put those two ten-foot setbacks in, you get the sight line from the street.
For another way to say it is that our, our setbacks are more restrictive than a sight triangle easily would produce. The sight triangle will fit within our setbacks, no problem.
Okay.
Where we're more strict.
So, that's good.
Anyone else? Yes?
Just a question again about the fencing, the fencing around the, the school property, is that written into what you're going to vote on tonight?
It'll be part of site of plan.
I'm sorry?
It'll be part of site plan, we talk about, you know, when the lots are sold, because the fencing.
But for the.
I guess, what, what are we going to do in, in the beginning?
For the.
If we approve this project, what happens to one, two, four, and five? They sit there with the, with the, with the chain link fence to the west with the weeds on it, and we're not.
We, we've been staggering proposals in such a way, that if you determine you want the fence taken down before you'll sign the subdivision plat, or before, I mean, I think there's a way to, to deal with that before the final, final plan is signed?
Just like we, we conditioned the demolition on the approval of this, of the site plan, the subdivision would be conditioned on site plan approval, too, of the individual parcels.
That was my concept.
So, the subdivision, we can go forward until you have a site plan on that parcel.
That, that was my concept, well, we haven't discussed it, it was also one of my concerns, I saw Victoria's draft, and there were no conditions, or there were other, kind of boilerplate conditions, that, that was one of the things that I thought of. So, yeah, they are going to be all dependent on each other, but we.
But something has to go first.
What?
And if something has to go first, or we have a.
We can debate, the word has to be there, but yes.
But just to be clear, no part of the process that we're going through now are we seeking site plan approval on lots one, two, four, and five?
Right.
And, and nor, nor can that be, nor I would ask that that be made a condition?
No, no, that can't be made a condition, I think there has to be.
Is that right?
The fence.
Well, that, that was not my original concept, that's what, that's what Victoria mentioned last week. We can debate whether that's a good idea or not. I just want to point out to the board, because there was some, because of some concerns that were expressed a few minutes ago, there will be, if no site plan approval is required, that, in this process, that would cover lots one, two, four, and five, site plan approval will be required when those lots are developed for, for houses.
Oh, yes.
So, as you're discussing, whether to put in, for example, a, a restrictive, a deed restriction on, let's say, lot four, for whatever reason. Whether or not there's a deed restriction, we can cover that on site plan approval for lot four. If you want, if you want fencing or.
If they begin, if they score approval, you begin construction, you would take down the, the chain link fence on the west and north side of lot three, but then the back of, the west side of lot four and the west side of one and two would stay chain link.
To be, to be clear, the applicant is willing to take down the fence on all the lots as part of lot three, but they're not willing to undertake a site plan approval on the residential lots, because there's no site plan yet.
Right.
But, you know, as being good neighbors, if, if it is the board's decision that the fence should come down in all portions, and again, you've heard mixed views on this fence, that, they're willing to add that to the mix.
So, would you put up like a six-foot privacy fence for the Millers on the west side?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be restoring any, anything on those lots at this time, because they're not doing site plan approval on one, two, four, and five.
When they sell it, a person will come in for site plan, and we'll discuss fencing then.
But what happens in between? So, this, the chain link fence behind one and two stays with the leaves on it?
You either decide to leave it for now, or you can have, they'll take it down during construction of lot three, I think that's a decision for four.
Yeah, we can do site plan on lot, lot three, and we could require them to take that down as part of that, I mean.
Well, the, the question is, I think, for site plan on lot three, whether we can do anything relating to a fence that would separate lot five from the neighbors to the west.
Except leaves.
Which doesn't, which doesn't.
So, can we do that as a condition of the subdivision?
They're, they're not willing to put up a fence at this point, because they don't know what.
No, don't talk about putting up, talk about taking down. The chain link fence on the frontage portions of the property, which is required in the code. Can that be made part of subdivision approval, so that when lot three goes forward, it will take down the fence of all those lots on the frontage? And you can dispute the back fence until we go through site plan.
That makes sense to me.
I'm confused about the question, but I think the intent of the zoning code, which the village board wrote, is to make sure that there's no chain link fencing along any other public roads.
How do we, once we subdivide lots one and two, say?
Right.
How do we require them to take down that fence?
Which fence?
If they don't sell that lot and they'll own it for four years.
That, that fence will stay.
Which fence you're talking about?
The Marston Mulberry.
Once we break into the lots, we can only talk about the lot.
It's interesting.
Different than this?
Both as, as life's.
Smaller.
If you go, if you go to the left.
Top left corner, same drawing.
It shows all the lots.
Well, the secret review on the zoning requires the fence to be taken down.
Yes.
And that's pretty clear.
So, we can make that a condition of the subdivision.
So, absolutely.
So that it covers the other lots as well.
All of this fence comes down all the way around?
No.
No.
Just, just along South and East Market.
If we think the code is required to take this fence down.
John's question is whether, I think, as we, as a, as a part of subdivision approval, we can require the removal of the fence that goes up that, right? That's what, that's what the discussion is?
Then, this fence, this half comes down, and that half of chain link stays up, and this half of chain link with the weeds stays up.
Well, yeah.
And these are open lots, anybody could play ball on it.
Well, it stays up potentially until those lots come in for.
That could be used.
Site plan approval.
Well, actually, that's for the board to, I mean, the board may decide, if the board decides it wants the chain link fences to stay up along the street, because it's a, it's a safety provision, that, that is something we should decide. John's question implied that the board wants it to come down as a visual provision, that we want these chain link fences to go away. That, that was the implication of your question.
I was just asking whether that, we could do that as part of subdivision approval, so for lots one, two, three, and four, and five.
Yes, and all of them is required, because the zoning requires that fence to come down.
So, we have the right to do that during subdivision?
I would actually, you have the obligation to do it.
Okay, I would like that, then.
Because I looked out my window yesterday, and I'm here in the open field playing frisbee with the dog, it must have covered through one of the openings.
There's a question from the public?
Does it continue?
Questions?
So, I, all, I mean, not, that's the only thing I'm concerned about, but what I was speaking to is on the north side of the parking lot of lot three, we have a privacy fence that was put up when the church purchased the property from the school. We want to make sure that that privacy fence stays there. So, because it's lot three, I was asking if it is something that gets written into the code, or whatever we're voting on today, or whether that is something that gets taken care of at another point in time.
It would come during the site plan approval for lot three.
Which is today?
No, we're talking subdivision approval now.
Okay.
Next meeting, the meeting after that, we'll be talking about the more details of the building and the perimeter of lot three only.
Thank you, thank you. I'm dense, so.
All right, so, that's okay. You, you and the Millers are the most affected people, being right on the border of the properties. Anyone else in public? Yes?
I'm confused about lot five, the chain link fence, is that, would that be the new property owner's responsibility to take down, or the developers? And when?
I don't know.
Are you, you, David.
Well, we can make a decision.
His finger around South and Mulberry and up East Market, but what do you, what's happening between our properties on lot five?
Well, there's two options, I think. One is to do it all at once, take it all down as part of subdivision approval, take down all the chain link fence. And you might have to live without a fence until that house comes in and wants to get a bill on the privacy fence or some replacement.
That is not a problem with us, we never wanted, or we don't like the chain link fence, we were, we've worked with it for the last forty years to take all those invasive, cultivate them into a, something that's appealing on our side. So, yeah, so I just needed to say that. But it sounds like lot five, that fence there is a kind of a question mark, at least for me.
Well, if we require them to take it all down, they will be taking down this section on lot three, if they take down this section, you can put up a.
Yeah, we know what we can't do.
Just to give yourself some privacy.
The chain link fence is the issue, is who would take that down? Who's responsibility would it be?
Applicant will take the fence down, and has agreed to take the fence down, even on lots one, two, five, applicant owns everything, and, and will do that as part of this. They just won't put anything up until there's individual plans for those lots.
If they choose to at all.
That, that works, okay, Sarah, she will, she could put a privacy fence along the west side, help the half, help the. It's not coming down, it comes down. But I'm just concerned about the vacant lot, open here, no fencing, as grass, was going to mow it, was going to watch it, and as I said, I saw a guy playing frisbee with his dog, he must have come into one of the openings and was playing frisbee with his dog the He must have come into one of the openings and was playing frisbee with his dog the other day. It was a dog park, that's why.
Whoever the owner is, whether it's them until they sell it or the new person when they buy it, is responsible for mowing the grass and keeping it up to date. And they can't do that with or without a fence.
But there's people using the property in the building.
They will use it.
Yeah, exactly. They will use it one way or the other. I think the fence is, to me, is something that I can't get down soon enough. And if it's an open lot, that's not such a terrible thing. And if they want to put up no trespassing sign, they can do that or whatever.
You'll have to put up some construction fence.
Only when it's not construction.
Yeah, when you start.
The only issue for us, I see, is the potential liability issues. With that fence there, it does limit the people going onto that corner lot. With that fence gone, everybody and their cousins are going to be there walking, their dog playing frisbee, softball. It's basically going to be a community park. And for us, there is a certain liability issue there.
It's open now.
We can, we can talk about the fence. We can think about it and come up with a proposal for the next meeting.
That'll be a site plan. Well, we need to vote or at least have a proposal we agree to so maybe we can draw something up for the next meeting that we can approve a resolution on the subdivision. How do we come to an agreement?
Have we? Heard from the audience?
The audience is, yep.
I just want to reiterate, and it's changed in terms of the, the past few meetings, the, you know, the, the front of the building, you know, having a front entrance maybe isn't doable, but the side entrance is a nice compromise. The, you know, the, the decision was made to subdivide the way you guys are trying to subdivide it. It's cramped and it's difficult, but that was a choice that was made. There, there is a choice too that was made not to do something front facing. So I think that you guys are, have a responsibility of really seriously looking at something to allow the public to intermingle with the, the folks that are living at six Mulberry and you could build it. So I, I really think, you know, time's the knife, because if you don't get the subdivision right, then you can't have at least a side entrance like Mr. Clark proposed.
Well, let's, let's talk through that because as you, now that David is here, John is still talking very strongly about side entrance, moving it up to where the existing door is now, but would.
Are we making that move part of the subdivision discussion?
No, not part of subdivision. So my question is, would the lot lines, as you want them percolated, move the side door up?
Not to my knowledge, but there would be consequences.
Yes, you'd have to totally redesign the interior of the building.
I don't have a problem redesigning the interior of the building. There isn't a, there's not a kind of work ethic here. The consequences have to do with more the quality of that entrance, the ADA accessibility of that entrance, where ramps will go for an entrance that is on the side like that, what that will look like front facing, what the access to that entrance from the ADA parking space, which is now going to be further from the entrance of the building than ideal for someone who's in a wheelchair. There are many things to consider that we would study and discuss. So it's really not so simple as saying, let's just move the entrance to the side of the building. There are a litany of consequences. Some have to do with interiors, certainly, but not nearly all of them. And so I don't know that, that they've been considered, certainly they haven't been considered by my team, I'm not sure they've been considered in fairness by anyone.
Well, when I did the alternative drawings, it shows the side entrance, but it also shows the rear ramp just where it is.
But there needs to be another ramp that goes to the basement.
And I think that will go in too.
In order to make those two units. I don't think you'll rise to run, based on my reading of that drawing and understanding what section of the building is actually right.
I think if you move that, rise to run five, 10 feet back farther, you can come right underneath that entrance.
When you move certain things around though, five, 10 feet further, they have consequences on what the look and feel of that entrance experience is, both for someone in a wheelchair and someone who's not. And so we should model that properly and really look at it.
No, we, we will do that during site plan.
Right.
But the principle, you weren't here when the principle I talked about, why the entrance should be there, for two reasons. One, it's most consistent with the code. It says the entrance should face the street unless it's deemed impracticable. And I, there's no reason, I think, that it's impracticable to put it on that side of the building. Number two, I lost number two. It's the historic location of the building entrance. And so if, if our charge is to maintain the historic building to the maximum degree feasible, we would want to put the entrance, which is a primary feature of a building, in the location where it is, rather than moving it to the back of the building, which I submit is contrary to the spirit and intent of the code. And in, contrary to the spirit and intent of the historic district overlay as well.
So I don't disagree with those arguments, right? They, they certainly hold weight. I think those arguments need to be balanced, in my mind, with what is a practicable fit for the building and for the user occupancy experience, right? So, and, and so we need your job and my job to help you investigate or help is to weigh those out, right? And so that's exactly what I'm saying, is that, yeah, I don't disagree with anything you just said.
Good.
Right? I think they have to be counterbalanced with how does the building function? And does it function suitably for the occupant? And so I would bring those arguments to the table in a, in a, in a drawing, in an analysis, in an understanding of the sectional qualities of the building, a real analysis of the ramping to, to make that so that we can investigate. That, that's where we're all.
That moving forward.
But that is site plan, right?
I'm still trying to get back to the five lots.
I had two other sort of questions related to the entrance. Is it legal, fire code, whatever, to have a two and a half story building high to two and a half story floors with one stairway and one entrance?
That's not the case. It has two means of egress. It has a scissor stair with two means of egress. So that's not.
Where is the two means of egress in the basement?
Yep, one comes down to the ground floor and out.
So if you're on the third floor and, and there's a fire at the, in the bike room in the back, you can't get out the back door.
You go down to the basement and out there is a ramp.
You go down two flights to the basement and then come back up. That doesn't seem to me very efficient for the fire crew.
Three hours ago, fire rate had closed.
That's up to, that's up to Ken and Justin, you know, in the building they're probably.
I'm just making my opinion.
Oh, I understand, but you know.
But that's an absolutely standard legal path of fire egress, 100%.
It doesn't make sense to me at all. And it's, it seems to me if you had a side entrance and a rear entrance that led to that stairway, then you would have two means of egress going out of that building on the same floor or the contiguous floor where you, where you're coming from. And that's part of the reason why I think the side entrance is so important.
Well, we've been at this, I mean, hour and we haven't come to an agreement on the five lots.
Can you go to the audience and just make sure that we have no?
Just a, a secondary comment. The, the building, the entrance on the side is one that creates a front on Mulberry Street because otherwise there is no front on the building. And I think that's a problem to begin with. And also I think it's great to have the back entrance for people that are taking three bags of groceries from Tops and need to bring it in from their car. So I, I think it satisfies more John's point with both the fire and the need for the neighborhood to have a front entrance like every other house, where you see people outside, coming and going, and you meet them on the street, on Mulberry Street. So that's my thoughts. And that was what you proposed, John, is that the entrance would actually face Mulberry Street.
Yes.
Correct?
Can we come to an agreement on the five lots?
Well, if we're, if we're through with the audience, we ought to close the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay.
If, if you're ready to make a decision. You seem ready to make a decision.
Well, I'm ready to at least come to a consensus that we can give David the instructions to make up the resolution to vote on at the next meeting. But if we're still up in the, if Jeff still wants a couple of feet, if you still want the corner, and we haven't come to an agreement, we can give David guidance and then we never get there.
If there's no other public comments, we can close the public meeting. And I'll make a motion, see if that motion flies. We'll see who else has a motion, but let's move it on to the motions if there are no other comments from the public.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now it's up to us.
And to be clear, to close the public hearing on the subdivision.
Yes.
Closing on the subdivision. I'll make a motion. We have these lots here for all the reasons I've mentioned repeatedly before in terms of limiting the hard space in the front of this building, adding a little more green space and adding a little more buffer. In the very latest proposal, I agree with 33 foot from the building to the southern edge of lot two and suggest that lot one and lot two be equal widths to split that difference. From the southern end of lot three, I still propose adding another three feet. I do not propose adding any kind of dog leg. I think the line should run from the street for all the reasons we also discussed. If we add three feet to it, and this is kind of interesting because the current, the current plan, if I understand it, brings 26 foot 11 inches from the edge of the building to their, to the applicant's proposed line. My additional three feet would bring it to 29 feet 11 inches and more green space, more visual appreciation of this side of the building. And not surprised, kind of pointed out in the last meeting, David, you mentioned that, well, we've got about 30 feet between here, so I'm proposing pretty much that, 29 foot 11 inches. That's my motion.
Is that a straight line at the bottom down to Mulberry Street?
Uh, yes. It does not include, in other words, lot four goes all the way to Mulberry. It does not affect the privacy of that owner. It doesn't invite a lot of public activity next to that owner. Oops. And as Darren has confirmed, it also doesn't, we don't have so much of an issue on the fencing. That's my motion.
Jeff, just to be clear, your southern line, both it's expanded a couple of feet, goes all the way back to the west to?
Yeah, three feet.
Three feet, but again, straight line all the way back to the west?
Yes, all the way to Mulberry. Now, now, I'll just point out, that's my motion.
I'm, I'm asking, to the edge of lot four or all the way through lot five?
Yeah, please.
All the way through lot five. That's my motion. And I won't be surprised if we have the discussion. The main concern for having this additional three feet is once again, from the pedestrian and the vehicular view, the green space, the buffer, the separation of the hardscape from here. Maybe there'll be another motion that says you only bring it back three feet to here and then cut it. But if we bring it back three feet the whole way, that will also, it will not inhibit the ability for acceptable septic and reasonably sized houses. And in fact, it would add a little bit more green space for the residents of here to do whatever they want to in their backyard.
So Jeff, and just to be clear, you're leaving the lines between five and four and the lines between one and two, exactly where they're proposing?
No, the, I, what I said, just let me correct it. I'm, I'm agreeing with the latest applicant proposal that the line for, that the southern line of lot two will be 33 feet from the north end of the building. And I'm suggesting that wherever that ends up, split the difference between lot one and lot two. It's going to make a difference of maybe a foot or so in each lot.
I guess, I, I don't want to vote yet until we have the resolution, but Michael, how do you feel about this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we're going to do parliamentary procedure, you can decide if you want it or not, but the typical thing to do would be to ask for a second, ask Jeff's motion, and then, then for discussion.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Now we have.
Now it's discussion.
Okay. I like the idea of the lot, of the line going all the way down to Mulberry Street. I don't think we need that corner. But you know, if Jeff's idea is right, adding a little more space on the right, a little more space on the left of the building, and lot four and five going straight down to Mulberry Street, I would vote for that site plan.
I still think that we need more of a flare of that, of that, and it doesn't have to go all the way to the corner, but I'd like to see some from the side entrance to the street be wide enough that you could actually have a sitting area.
So I may, I suggest that at this stage of the discussion, your options are either to make a, make a motion to amend or not.
That's where I was headed. That's where I was headed.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to, can you pull up lot two? Or option two?
Your option two, John.
Yeah. So I would amend, move to amend Jeff's, so it's three feet farther, all the way up and down till it hits the corner here and splits the difference of, from that corner to this corner of the building. So it has a flare coming out from that entry where the side entrance is right now. And so it would be three feet plus the flare that's halfway between the building and the sidewalk.
Whoa, halfway between, do you, I'm looking for some, if you may not want to.
Well, let's, let's, I mean, I think people understand, halfway between the corner of the building and the, the corner of that sidewalk, so that would be somewhere right in here, say. And it would go up to where that 10 foot or the, I guess, 29 and a half foot. Line is and intersecting the side of where that entryway is right now.
Okay, so, so even though we're not, if somebody with a straight edge, then you can draw it.
So it gives a little bit more of a, of a flare so that it leads to that entrance.
Does everybody understand the motion?
No.
I understand the motion, but I'd like to ask, if you're getting the flare in the front, why the extra three feet along the back? It really makes lot four and five backyard very, very narrow.
You know, as you're complaining about, you're asking about the three feet.
Yeah.
We can't do both.
Yeah, exactly.
There's not enough space.
There is enough space. It doesn't affect the septic at all.
Listen, is there a second for John's?
I mean, three, three feet like this. So again, I ask, I'm not sure, I mean, I get it toward the front if you're saying you want more space for an entryway of three feet, but going all the way to the edge of lot five.
Let's let Mr. Roberts deal with this. Does anybody second John's motion?
Mr. Roberts. Roberts ruled a little order. I think he needs.
So we'll, we'll put in a second. So the motion's failing.
So I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
So could we go back to the last plan you had there, Jeff, what the applicant most recently submitted?
Wait, 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 wait. Are you, Darren, are you amending John's motion?
Jeff's.
You're amending Jeff's.
John's, John's.
John's motion has failed.
To the side. So I'd like to amend the motion to approve this version of the plan. And my logic is a couple of different things. One is I think it still allows John's concept to happen, right? There's nothing stopping the side door from being placed on lot three. It gives you what was stated as a desire, the connection to, to South Street through a smaller triangle, not quite as big a triangle. But what it also does for me is the thing I pointed out at the last meeting, because of the angle that the house on lot four sits at, it pushes it just up screen a little bit so that it doesn't conceal the corner of the big building. And I know that's a little ridiculous, it's a small house concealing a big building. But if you look at the way that house is oriented, if you pull it down to the allowable set that corner, it actually does something, I think, bad for the corner. So this little golf club, upside down mailbox flag, as we refer to it, does a little something for me by just giving a little more space on the corner. And when I look at the massing on the street, because the applicant's previously put together a plan that shows us the massing on all the surrounding streets, I think it still complies. In fact, I think it's closer to what the existing rhythm is on South Street. The other thing that I mentioned when I advocated for this concept previously is I don't love the idea of making lots four and five less deep because what I think it forces to happen is that the buildings then become rectangles with the wide side facing South with the wide side facing South Street. And it may still happen, there's nothing we can do right now to prevent that from happening. But again, if you look at the rhythm on the street, you have a lot of rectangular houses with the skinny side facing the road. So it gives a little more optionality to put deeper houses with a smaller frontage, which I feel are a little bit more in keeping with village character, a little less new construction subdivision of today looking. So I'm worried that if we add the 3 feet to the side of Lot 3, we hurt the buildability, we hurt the livability also of Lots 4 and 5, to David's point about them having room to grill and have backyards. So that's why I like this plan better than the motion that's on the table today.
Any second for Darren's motion?
Well, I suppose I would second it because it's better than having no corner at all. I think that this is inadequate.
To be left to second.
It doesn't need to go to the entry.
But it's a step in that direction.
No, but it's, it's something. But I, I think this is non-functional, but I will vote for it rather than lose the entire corner as a house, so I'll second that.
Any other discussion on Darren's motion?
Darren, what are we doing? Darren's motion overrides Jeff's.
I'm going to take a vote on Darren's motion. If it passes, we'll take a vote on the other motion.
What about you, what do you mean?
Okay, Darren's made a motion to amend Jeff's motion so it looks like that. Vote on the motion to amend.
Okay, and that includes the dimensions proposed in the most recent proposal by the applicant?
7 and 17, is that what we're talking?
This is the 7 and 17 part.
Okay.
And do you want to comment? Jeff's asking whether, what about Lots 1 and 2, do you want to accept his equal or what the applicants proposed, which is more or less equal?
The 33 feet from the building.
Yeah, well, that's what they're proposing.
Which they're proposing.
We already have the thing you mainly want, it's just a matter of whether equalize Lots 1 and 2 in size, is what you're talking about.
Is the proposal not equal, just for clarification?
They're about one foot different.
Okay, everybody knows what it is, though. Close enough, you all understand.
So you're proposing this one?
I'm agnostic, Joe, I think this one is fine. The foot doesn't bother me on the lot.
Give me a note, you gotta, you make the motion.
I'm fine with it as proposed.
And I've seconded it out of desperation.
And your desperation's been noted.
So if we vote on this, we don't have the resolution yet because you have...
If you vote on this, you will have amended the original motion, and then we're going to vote on that.
But it's not a final vote.
Where do we vote on that?
You're voting on Darren's amendment right now.
But it's not a final vote, because we don't have the resolution.
You're losing all of your rights.
We're only, we're only voting on the parameters court to draft the resolution.
Just to vote for men, yours, if you care, we'll vote on this.
So Darren's resolution is against?
Yes.
I get it, I get it.
I mean, do we, I have to ask, do we want to just read the draft resolution and you can amend it?
No. Take your resolution and say, oh, we're going to do it tonight.
I'm trying to get to a consensus.
The words "actual proof" of the subdivision plan, that's the subdivision plan.
So it's already, I mean, just so we're clear, this would be preliminary plan approval, and then the applicant will have to do all the...
Okay, to be clear, Victoria's clarification is that the motion is to authorize me to write up a subdivision approval resolution for your next meeting based on particular plat. You're choosing the plat to advise us to work up a resolution for that. So this is not actually the final vote? John, if something happens, you'll have another crack at the applicant?
Correct, but I also wanted to explain, I also wanted to explain that it's, the resolution would be for preliminary plat approval because then the applicant has to come back with a final plat, with all the, you know, the line's perfect, that has the SDS.
Well, it's preliminary in the fact, except that we have to adopt the resolution next week.
Okay, no, I understand that, you're saying that...
And first of all, it will be...
That's what I mean, you have to do the final, and when it's done, we have to vote again.
Yes.
Next month.
Victoria, you didn't know we worked out the way it is, is they're voting on plat.
But you're referring to our code, which has a preliminary plat and a final plat.
The process, yes.
So this is preliminary plat.
Three more people to vote.
No, you need, you need 8 votes on Darren's motion.
We had a motion, right? Motion is second, no one's voting yet, okay.
Although, you know, you should, everybody should be satisfied that you've discussed what you want to discuss on Darren's motion to amend. So if there's no further discussion, you should call for a vote.
Okay. All those in favor of Darren's motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
I see 2 votes. Alright, so Darren's motion fails. Now we're back at Jeff's, now we're back at Jeff's motion.
Are we back at Jeff's or are we back at zero?
Your motion to amend had failed.
I know mine failed, but do we go back to Jeff's?
So we're back at Jeff's.
So there's no amendment. So derailing Jeff would have required a positive vote on the amendment, both of them failed.
Look, we have had 4 to 1 votes and 3 to 2 votes in the past, this is a democracy.
But how do we... Now you're left with, now you can discuss Jeff's, further discussion of Jeff's motion.
But are you happy with the footage on Lot 1 and 2 now?
Yes, the 33 feet back, split, you know, do whatever you want, and just without the dogleg, bring 3 feet back to allow better view from the street, more greenery. And it won't impede the ability to build quite reasonable homes there on either lot.
Okay, so it failed, so we have Jeff's, back to Jeff's motion.
Again, this is to authorize, to authorize you to wrap something to write.
I'd like to be clear, the applicant prefers this plan to one that hasn't been drawn up or studied yet.
Because, but based on the last meeting, what we tried to do, the reason we extended to present another drawing, because we felt this was the drawing that the board would satisfy at least, let's say, 80% of the board. I mean, we provided the, what you call the mailbox flag that was wanted.
So you are happy with the flag?
Yes, well, we're not crazy about it, but we... I mean, I think to the flag, I understand Darren's point about the kind of seat or the kind of, for the house and the corner being pushed further back. I have serious concerns about moving the southern, the shared east-west lot line with 4 and 5, 3 feet to the south. I think that will, once you push that then, the 10 foot setback back and then have to put septic in, you're going to very likely not have an opportunity to have septic well organized on the western part of that lot. Perhaps then forcing the house to be on that western part of the lot so you can squeeze septic in on the eastern part of the lot, it will provide less flexibility for future owner of that lot in...
I mean, if I buy Lot 4, I mean, John mentioned this about overlooking, I would flip this, I'd put my house up there so that the people on 3 and 4 were looking at, you know, my back, my barbecue would be overlooked, but at least my bedrooms would not be overlooked by the building center. So we don't know what's going to happen in these 4 lots.
If you look at the dotted lines on this map, all 4 of these dotted lines can be moved 3 feet without affecting your septic system or your sepsis.
On Lot 4, I mean, it does look pretty close to the dotted line, the septic.
There's certainly 3 feet there.
You know, John, you're right, I can't, I mean, I can pull up my cat and snap a line, and you're probably right, there's probably 3 feet there. It still brings to a question whether that's a good idea. Whether you're overly squeezing it and creating a bottleneck.
Hey, I'm looking for the flag.
Teaching a...
I got it, right.
3 feet, but they're not both split, and now you're saying you want it?
No, no, we're saying the applicant prefers, so the applicant's preferred plan was no flag, leave the line between 3, 4, and 5 where it is. But if they were given the choice between moving 3 feet or the flag, they prefer the flag because they, moving 3 feet makes the backyards of 4 and 5 narrower.
They're now already, they're both going to have side yard and backyard.
We're waiting to vote on my motion.
On your motion, but you want to move it to 3 feet.
That was my motion.
That's the motion.
And my motion doesn't have 3 feet.
And I gave it, or Michael gave it a second.
To move it 3 feet, but how does the line go down to the street? This is 3 feet.
Yeah.
That's 3 feet. That's not good.
It gives a little bit more breathing room for the building.
Yes, it does.
And I don't think it affects the septic or sepsis.
Except we have 2 for the flag and 3 cannot be flagged, so...
Well, let's vote on it.
Hold on.
He asked for a motion, we have a second. 3 foot more on Lots 4 and 5 and split the difference on Lot 1 and 2.
Agreeing to the 33.
No, 1 and 2 we're staying.
But the line's probably straight down.
Yeah, agreeing to the 33 foot off the, north from the building for the southern end of Lot 2.
That's the motion. That's, that's been the proposal for the past 2 days.
It's the first one I saw that.
But he wants to split the difference.
It's the first one I saw that, and I agree with it. So shall we vote?
Okay. We're moving the line on 4 and 5?
Yes, the north, well, we're moving the line on Lot 3, south 3 feet and not including a flag.
And 1 and 2 are going to be split rather than a half feet off, a half a foot one way, the other.
So you want to move 3 feet this way, all the way up?
Yes.
And all the way down to Mulberry Street.
All the way down to Mulberry.
Doesn't interfere with the privacy of the future owner of Lot 4? And neither, neither one of those Lot 4 or Lot 5 would be compromised with their ability to put septic, as confirmed by the engineer in the last meeting.
Kind of proposing alternate, I mean, I feel like, again, we're throwing out numbers. But what if the 3 feet is only for a portion of the building so that you're ensuring there's enough room for the entryway instead of going all the way to the middle of the building?
Would you be worth having an amendment that says it's 3 feet for Lot 4 and not for Lot 5?
Well, that's up to you, Jeff, it's up to you.
I don't think the entrance is wide or...
I mean, I think about what it would do to offense and just...
Some confusion of that child.
I got that window open, I got that window open, I got that window open.
Alright, why don't we call a vote so we can get on to the next meeting?
Well, would you, would you be open to an amendment of less than 3 feet? Some number less than 3, it's a very arbitrary number, but...
3 is middle.
Darren, as your parliamentarian, I'm advising you, it doesn't matter, if you want to make that amendment, go for it.
I won't vote for you this time.
Yeah. All I have ideas I got, I'm not going to vote. I think it's a mistake to make Lots 4 and 5 any shallower than they are, but it's a complying, it's a conforming plan. I mean, at the end of the day, it conforms, there's no basis to not vote yes for it.
Could we? We'd like to have the board vote on this plan, if that fails, then...
It did.
It did.
I know, but like a real, like call a vote on it.
It's called a vote that came up 3 to 2 against.
But there's been several other discussions since.
Well, unless anybody wants to change their vote.
You'd have to reintroduce the motion again.
Right, well, if anybody's willing to change their vote, well, I'll put that as amendment. It doesn't seem like there is.
You have a question?
I just wanted to ask David and Michael, I know Jeff's position, what your opposition is to that small flag area.
I think lot line should be rectangular, I'm not, I mean, to me, that green line is basically a reverse flag lot.
Right, I agree with, I agree with Michael. I like, not to be...
Straight continuous line.
I complained you submitted a month ago. The original plan was fine with me, but, you know, I'm only 1 vote, so we're trying to negotiate.
Part of you suggesting that you might potentially offer a motion that eliminated the flag portion and left that lot line where it is, is that what you're saying?
That's what I like, what they proposed.
Can we make the motion on this?
I'm sorry? The chair, if you choose, you can...
So I'm making a motion, an amendment.
Move the amendment, do what? Just to get rid of the flag and keep the line straight without Jeff's 3 feet?
Yes. Okay, do we have a second?
What is the motion? What is the motion? I'd like to hear the chair's opinion.
The motion is to go...
To adopt that without the flag.
Right.
So it comes straight down, as proposed.
Yes, as proposed. What about Lot 1 and 2, leave the lot, move it where Jeff wants?
Yeah, move it where Jeff...
That's what it is.
Another foot or so.
Between them. Yeah, we could do that. Move the lot line.
I'll second that.
Michael second.
Motion on the amendment to just push that line straight down.
Right. All in favor? 3, we got 3. You will not be able to do the amendment.
It was David Miller, he, and it was 3 to 2.
That amendment passed.
That amendment passed, now we're back to...
Now we got, we have an amended motion to authorize us to write a resolution for next month for this subdivision without this flag, like that, straight line.
So that's Jeff's not original motion?
It's been amended. The chair's motion, the chair's amended, passed.
Yeah, we're running on David Miller's motion. We have, we have voted on David Miller's motion, and it's 3 to 2.
Right, so now, but we, now the motion's amended, it's the hall in Roberts rules of order, now we got to do it again. Now you're voting on the motion to authorize me to write a resolution with that.
With that.
Full stop.
I'll make the motion, do we have a second?
Motion's on the table.
Oh, it's on the table, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 3 to 2. They got tied, next time they start 5 o'clock. Moving on way backwards.
So Victoria and I will work together to let that come, so who should you guys, you will have it on the table next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, patience. Alright, Mr. Chair, to completely use our attorney's time, I would request that we go a little bit out of order and ask that KRC, representing ACVP LLC at 6376 and 623 St., strictly used, we're perfectly the next item on the agenda.
Who's, who's...
Let us talk to Smokey Rock.
Well, Smokey Rock, yeah.
Hi, hello. My name's Natalie Quinn. I work for KRC Planning Consultants, we met two months ago, I believe, when I first did an informal kind of presentation on this. If you could, it's the slide deck on the sun drive that...
Jeff.
Oh. When did we get this?
It's everything that's, it's, what's in the submission, it's just organized in a slide deck.
Oh, okay, I didn't see anything as of this morning, this is just from earlier today?
I should have got a Dropbox, Jeff, and I guess my colleague did not send the Dropbox to the board.
Okay, Natalie, what shall we start with?
The same thing, the top one, the PDF is fine, please, thank you. Great. So Smokey Rock Barbecue is the location, the address is 6376. What is being proposed, if we move to the second slide? This is the existing parcel. It's about, it's 0.78 acres, actually. Right now, what you see there is the existing structure placed towards the front of the lot. There is the front dining, outdoor dining area that is utilized for outdoor dining. And in the rear, there is an outdoor patio that is no longer used for dining, but that is where the access to the building is. So you do have to kind of enter the restaurant through the rear portion due to liquor laws.
So there's no entrance in the front of the building, from the front?
There is too, but there is, but you can't walk in off the sidewalk through that way, through like the dining area because of liquor authority. The entrance has to be set back so much from the nearest churches.
I think it's too close to the church.
So you, so you can, you can enter that...
You used to be able to walk in this way.
No, no, you have to walk to the rear of the building and walk in through that back patio. You can enter that front dining, outdoor dining area.
But you can still have a drink out there.
What?
You can still have a drink on the patio.
You can't, the entrance just has to be...
That's ridiculous.
200 feet from the church, that's an old law.
Liquor's lit, liquor authority.
Been on books since Roberts rules of order.
You can drink out there, but you can't walk through that.
But you can't walk through that, yeah.
Sorry, it's further from the church.
We would change it if we could. So going to the next slide, what's... Yeah, there you go. So the existing use is the restaurant, right? 2,440 square feet with the outdoor dining in the front and the rear patio and existing parking. What is being proposed is to retain the existing building with the restaurant, to add a new structure, a separate structure on the rear portion of the lot that will have 4 units in it, each unit... Each unit could be two bedrooms or one bedroom with an office or den. All the units are approximately 780 square feet. And like I said, the existing restaurant and structure will remain. So if we go to the next slide, that will get us to... We can actually jump to. Sorry, one more.
One more.
Let's just take you to the site plan. I'm not used to not having my own ability to click through. Okay, so this is the proposed site plan. So what you're seeing there is the rear added structure, right? And there are four kind of mirror units. Again, two bedroom or one bedroom with a den. Each one has a parking space on the ground floor in a garage space. And they are two stories above that. So the ground floor is the parking garage and the door and access. And then you would walk up to the second story, which is the living space. And then you would walk up, and then the third story is bedrooms.
And this curved line here is the 100-foot wetland?
Wetland. Yeah, there is a wetland buffer.
There is a little bit more room before it drops off the cliff there, but you can't go back because...
Yeah, so if we went back to the second slide, you can see how deep the lot is. But yes, we are restricted from going to the very rear of the parcel because of that 100-foot wetland buffer.
Is that a DEC wetland?
Yes. We're working on, there's part of it that's DEC and there's part of it that's Army Corps of Engineer. So we are just assuming DEC for the whole portion of it because they have the 100-foot setback.
Right, but you're not sure yet.
We're working on the exact jurisdiction of the full park.
The maps on parcel access don't show the DEC wetland extending up that far.
Sorry?
The wetland maps on parcel access...
Don't show that. But our engineer worked on the Mirabeau project, which did realize that a portion of it is DEC regulated. So again, out of an abundance of caution, we have used the 100-foot buffer and designed with that in mind.
Because it would be nice if they could be back a little bit to give you more than 20.
It is as steep, as we've talked about, there is a significant drop as well, right? So for constructability, it does make sense, and connection to existing utilities, it does make sense to keep it...
Something reinforcing it before you put a house, a car, and people in there. And then you don't have to put concrete supports or piles or something down there to make sure...
To support the building, absolutely. And again, our engineer did work on Mirabeau, so we are familiar with some of the fill in this area and the different reinforcements that have to be put in place to structurally support these buildings.
Is it possible that this unit gets put over here and then this gets taken out, so...
No.
I originally wanted it that way until the DEC was...
Well, we need a circulation, we need circulation for, it's one way in and one way out. So we can't lose, I guess I'm not fully understanding, but we can't lose that drive aisle there because that's required for circulation on the site. If we...
So the overhang of the decks, does that count towards the 100-foot buffer?
So if we keep going through, let's go to, I'll show you the elevations, which is the... If we can go to the last slide, slide nine, please, just so you can kind of see. The overhang or the decks have been moved to the second floor. Scroll up just a little bit, you're missing... There we are, it's in the top right corner, that is the back view, right? So that is facing the wetland. And so the overhang is allowed to go over the buffer line because it's not touching the ground.
Right.
So I think originally when we had come to you with the initial concept...
It was one floor.
It was two stories altogether, the ground floor was parking with like a little office and a patio on the back.
And now it's gotten higher.
It's gotten to three stories so that we can do, A, because that was recommended by the board about kind of maximizing this use and could three stories. And it actually doesn't work out better that way because then we can, we couldn't do the patios on the back if they were on the ground floor because they would cross into the wetland buffer. So you lose that ability to have some kind of outdoor space back there. So by, A, creating larger size units, right? So that you actually have the necessary square footage. We also created the ability to have a third story with the second story, which is the main living space, living room, kitchen, having a small balcony, each one of them having a small balcony that overhangs over the wetland area.
There's only one apartment in each one.
One apartment in each one.
Or it could be two bedrooms.
It could be two bedrooms, or it could be one bedroom and an office.
Yeah, the original concept was very small.
They were very small, and then once we started working with the architect to build these out, right? And doing the stairs and everywhere, our engineer had originally kind of just put those boxes down. And we started getting really close to not being able to meet the minimum square footage for units. So since the board had recommended considering a third story, that actually became necessary to have livable-sized units, let's say. So there's still, you know, 780 is not huge, but it's a good living space. And then we can fit two bedrooms in there now, so it creates a little bit of flexibility. I think the intent is still kind of for working professionals and, you know, couples. But you could have two bedrooms. We do find in the market that a lot of couples still want the second bedroom floor, even if they don't have children or someone else living, still want that as a guest bedroom or office space with the amount of people working from home.
So we have our attorney here because we have some issues with the code.
Okay.
The code specifies that we're supposed to have stores, you know, active businesses in the business district. This is of course an auxiliary to an active business on the first floor in front of the property. I'm not sure what the code says, and that's why we have a statement to stay for this.
Yeah. We looked at this a couple of months ago. I wrote a memo for Ken and Justin that preceded this. The short message is that, under the strict letter of the code, I believe, and I can make the memo available to the board if you wish, under the strict letter of the code, I believe this is legal because it is a multifamily dwelling. And that's allowed in the district, I think it applies especially to the...
Special permit.
Yeah, so it's allowed. And there's no restriction, in a multifamily dwelling, obviously, that's allowed in the district. And it is not contemplated that a multifamily dwelling would have a storefront on the lower floor. If it did, it would be an apartment, and those two things are different. So this is a multifamily dwelling, there's no storefront. It is permitted in the district with a special permit. This, and I'm not sure if the applicant's aware, this eventuality is not, I believe, if one might have heard, is not necessarily consistent with the vision for the district as moving forward in the complaint.
Well, the complaint is not the law today.
And I think that's true, I was on the complaint committee. And I don't think we ever took a position that in the rear you couldn't have multifamily.
That's an interesting point because it was expressed to me that that concept was, is the CPC. And furthermore, it was expressed to me with such force, including up to today.
Did they quote some section?
I'm sorry?
Did they quote some section, because I don't remember any discussion about that.
I can just, there were one or two people who felt strongly and then communicated to the point where it was suggested to have discussions with the applicant to consider waiting until the village figured out exactly what its vision was to move forward on this. But as things stand right now, the analysis study I did back in May indicates that this is permitted because of the exact wording of the current code.
Now, we have done this before. We did this with Garden Street. Mace built a new building and had a store in the front, I think it's the photographers' studio, I thought it was Byns-Bird of a photographers' studio. And behind it, on the first floor where stores are required and apartments are not allowed, they proposed a handicapped accessible first-floor apartment behind the store. We like that because we want handicapped accessible apartments, so we approved that. So it sets some precedent. And this technically is behind the store, it's behind the restaurant.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I brought into that analysis, this is just a multifamily building that is permitted under the code, the special use permit. The behind, the, I, this is a separate building from the store. And so I'm not, the idea that's behind it is, I mean, I get where you're coming from, it's not something I...
We haven't got a subdivision though, so it's part of the property.
Oh, yeah, part of the property, and there's no illegality of having two uses on the same property. That's also allowed of the property.
And we want apartments in the village center.
That was, if you're looking at the policies here, there are some, there are policies that are kind of rubbing up against each other. One is, and one of the reasons why I felt that this was consistent, before I understood exactly where the CPC was alleged to be going, I thought this was consistent with some of the policies because it's bringing more residential into this district, which is something that we want. The people on the CPC, apparently John, who are concerned about this made it very clear that they are concerned about the concept of the front of the building being garaged. Now, I pointed out, well, it's the back, it's the back, and so this is not going to have any visible, necessarily visible front to John Route 9. At which point, apparently, part of the vision of the CPC is to actually begin extending the publicly accessible retail area to what we might think of as alleys and back areas. So this is something which is in the mix, and therefore, it is questioned as to whether this is where the CPC and the village wants to go. But under the current code, my interpretation was, it's a multifamily building. You're allowed to put it on a lot with retail. I wasn't buying necessarily that it was a back, I felt that that was, that was a little bit of a stretch. It's not what was intended, but it's a multifamily building, and so...
I mean, I pointed out many times that the business district is a residential district since there is apartments above almost every store in the village, which is good as well.
But this is not that, because it's not, because we don't have a storefront.
It's behind and not above it.
So that's where I was, I'll make the memo available to you guys. But again, some of the folks who are concerned about where the district is going wanted to have a discussion on that, but the applicant's here tonight and moving forward. So all those, those are the wheels that are in motion.
Because Lydia said after the complaint is approved, then they're going to be forming a code committee to rewrite the code, and that's going to take another year.
That'll be another two years.
Or two years.
She was one of the first folks to...
I'm always optimistic. Yes, it's good.
Two years is optimistic.
In two years, that's right, correct. Today, the law is...
That was my, that was my interpretation. I will also say that some of the CPC people who were concerned had, were interpreting, I guess I have to go back and look it up, but there's a theme in this district that we only, that we have to have storefronts on the bottom. And so they viewed that as being compelling as well. It's not something that I found, and I can, I'm certainly going to go back and double check and take a look.
I think there would be ammunition on the comprehensive plan committee for not having garage doors spaced on the ground floor, facing the front of the building.
Yeah.
But that's not adopted yet. And I don't think there's any indication from my perspective that in the village-centered district, you can't have a multifamily building that goes down to the ground floor.
I would point out John's comment is interesting because some of these people thought that he would be the first to lay down his body in front of the...
No, as long as it's in the back, as long as it's in the backyard.
But sort of, John, because you're not saying the village-centered principles don't apply because it's multifamily, right? You're saying multifamily is a special permit in the village center, but the principles for the village-centered district still apply. So one of the principles is the ground floors shall primarily contain active publicly accessible uses. Retail uses are encouraged, any retail establishment will sell each such a size. So it does stay in our current code, comprehensive plan aside.
That's right. And to carry that thought further, at present, there's no real concept that this building would be a contributing part of the district in the same way that the buildings with the facades on Route 9 are. But the CPC is also considering opening up some alleyways to more general activities. So would ultimately be, the facade would become important at that point once you start opening up, it's private property, but it will always be accessible to people who do shopping. So literally, there's a bunch of wheels that are turning.
And it does say that, again, it says shell primarily, it doesn't say shell. And it says retail uses are encouraged, doesn't say they're required. So even the principles are soft. And in this case, I think that certainly applies to the bulk of the lot. Ground floor of the main building is retail.
That's not going to say in terms of square footage, of looking at the square footage of what is still the restaurant, an active restaurant versus the square footage footprint of this building.
So are we... And if this was proposed along the front, or even near the front, I would not be in support of it. But this is in the back, behind the parking lot, and it's the perfect place to put a traditional residential. If you look at, you know, like Herman Teigen's office, he has retail up front and apartments in the back.
Sure. I think my own, well, one is the garage door spacing the street. Which is, you know, the layout of this is very, you know, suburban townhome, right, to be honest. And then, secondly, the fact that the restaurant's accessed from the rear, right? So there is a little bit of public space behind the building there that I suppose is probably never going to be dynamic, retail space, it might be slightly dynamic, office space. But I don't know that there's a good use for the ground floor of this, but I'm just pointing out the fact that this is, it's almost all correct, except for that it enters the back of the building.
I think during site plan, we can make those garage doors less visible. Certainly from the entrance to the building, you could put screening behind that parking lot. And you could recess the doors a little bit too, I think.
Which they've tried to do a little bit here.
Yeah.
But I agree, I mean, I wanted to put that out there because I think that's going to be the primary thing we have to look hard at during site plan. And maybe another suggestion just to put out there is, you know, it might just be worth sitting with those people on the comprehensive plan committee just to hear that input and see if they have something in mind that they may facilitate, a door that they may open up for you. And at least you could report back and say, you know, having met with them, they didn't have any magic tricks up their sleeve, anything that would change this substantially, but at least we've checked that box and gotten the input from, you know, maybe David and Chair, who those are, or maybe just reach out to Trustee Slavy, who's the head of the comprehensive plan committee, and just hear her out and see if there's anything she might offer that the village is thinking about that might help you here.
So we feel comfortable making a motion to schedule a public hearing for October 1st, the next meeting? And that'll give us more time to think about it and more time to do more research.
I think we should have some comments on this before we go to that because I think there needs to be some changes before we go to a public hearing.
Okay.
And I, but we keep saying that we're getting to cycling, so we're not doing, I guess I was trying to pick up on the last application.
Special permit.
So you're doing special permit first and then site plan, okay.
We're usually trying to do concurrent, apparently.
Okay, so we're doing both?
Both, yeah.
Okay, so we're doing both, cycling.
And then you buy a seeker, so, right, so...
So I guess my suggestion tonight is the board declare lead agency and then table the application to October 1st, or can you do the application to October 1st?
Well, we could give some preliminary, and yes, absolutely.
Natalie, are there any other involved agencies in this?
I'd have to look, let me look at the seeker form real quick.
If there are, then we have to circulate that, that's a thing of the process.
Water, would you be on septic, or the village sewer?
Connect to village sewer and water, both will be connected to the system. I don't think we have any listed. And then potentially, I think because of the parking, if ZBA would be involved as well, if there's a need for the variance.
Do you need variance?
So if you go slide, slide four.
Tell me where this stuff, because these aren't actual slides here, I can't see.
Yeah, so up at the top, you keep going, one more, this one.
This one?
Yep, that one. So based on the code, I mean, I guess this is something that why attorneys here that at the bottom, right under minimum walk coverage, right? So required parking, because this is deemed multifamily, rather than, you know, apartments in the village, which is one space per unit, multifamily requires two space per each unit, right? So that's eight. And then I don't know how the board treats existing circumstances, right? So the restaurant currently operates with less parking than what is required by code. The restaurant is operating with 15 parking spaces as it currently stands, where based on the code, it looks like 26.5 spaces are required. So I guess that's what we were kind of looking for guidance on here today is whether or not we have to factor in the existing parking deficiency for the restaurant.
I would suggest that the first step in that would not be the planning board. It says the first step in that is the CEO. The CEO's going to have to make the zoning, we don't make zoning determination, that's a consistency with...
So, but I guess what I was flagging there is that the ZBA is potentially an involved agency as well.
Well, right, but my...
But you can't go to the ZBA without getting a positive or negative recommendation from this board first. Even before that, you need an interpretation from the CEO.
And that they would be...
Yeah, this board needs to know that it's consistent with the zoning before we pick it up. So we'll need a CEO interpretation, and if the CEO decides that it needs a variance for whatever reason, then what we'll do is, we'll declare a lead agency, we'll go through a seeker before the ZBA. We'll go through seeker before the ZBA gets it. I mean, they can go, they comply with ZBA. That'll make them an involved agency, but then we're going, we're going, I assume, want to be the lead agency here. So we come back to declare lead agency.
Presumably, this barbecue went in under current zoning. And so presumably, you had to have a variance because that wouldn't have been enough, wouldn't have been in the range that would be applicable by the planning board, that much of a deficit of parking.
I don't know because it was a restaurant before that, and that was already an existing condition.
I have pictures of others from 1940s. Can you, Ryan, that coffee shop? It's been a restaurant for.
So I'm wondering if, would it change? Because it was just a change of use of a similar use.
Now, they, they just have a front yard parking lot, and they changed it to a backyard parking lot. So parking would have been in the mix.
But they might have been.
Right, and somebody researched that?
I was consulting from.
Parking.
Well, I thought, what I'm saying is you find out if they got a variance.
I don't believe they did get a variance. That's why I'm saying that.
The parking would have, the parking would have come from when Smokey Rock got their approval based on the amount of indoor and outdoor seats. So the calculation would be the seating in the back, the seating inside the restaurant, and the seating on the patio.
That's more than 15 now. So can you look that up?
See if they got a variance the first time.
Sure.
What is Zen Dog, what is, what's other restaurants?
It's been a restaurant for 80 years, so.
Well, it was a wine, it was a wine bar, and then it was Zen Dog. But Smokey Rock has had the most use as a restaurant than the previous two.
It was an office before that.
It was an insurance office. It was the K A, A, Agency. I'm 36, 20 years ago.
So they changed it from an office to a restaurant, moved the parking from the front to the back, or consolidated it in the back. I'm not sure if they had parking back there.
So.
So I, I happy to table that and figure out if a variance was granted. I can look up with the applicant, and if you can search the records to see. But I think regardless, a variance for parking is going to be required because there are 15 spaces existing and 15 spaces proposed and four residential units being added, right? So I think.
And the code is strange in the sense that they make a difference between apartments and multifamily.
Yes, yeah, so the number's been a vary, right?
It should make a difference because the units are the same.
But they still need a variance apartment or multifamily.
So I guess, knowing that ZBA is involved, is going to be involved at some point, I guess what I'm looking for is clarification, if we could run through what that process is one more time.
Good, good question. I, in my experience, there's a typical process, but Ryan was informing me that the village may have been approaching this in a different way, so.
So usually with variances, this board would prefer that the variance be addressed almost right out. Because if the parking spaces in this case can't support the proposed use, what's the point in going through site plan if you can't fully execute the use that is desired? So essentially, I guess in the parameters of this, you would want clarification from the CEO if there was a previous variance given on this property. And if what's being proposed requires an additional area variance, then that comes back on October 1st, and they provide, the planning board provides either a positive or negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. If they support the area variance for however many spaces that are needed or don't make up. The other option is, and I don't know if this fits in, you guys could do parking in lieu of, however, does this succeed more than 50% of.
Depends on whether it has a variance or not.
Yeah.
Existing variance.
We don't know anything until you guys do the research.
All right, so there is the other option of parking in, in lieu of, which is $1,000 a space that you don't have.
Yep, okay. So CEO clarification, deeming whether there was a, a previous variance, which helps us figure out what the required number is versus what's the proposed number, right? And then from there, the applicant has the option of going to the ZBA, first coming to this body to get a positive or negative recommendation, then going to the ZBA, or alternatively, paying for the.
Possibly, if that fits. There is, there is a catch to that.
Okay.
That the number of spaces paid for cannot exceed 50% of.
Real spots.
Yeah.
The existing spots.
Okay. Not exceeded, yeah.
But we don't know if there's been a previous payment based on the old use, so that would be.
That's in the records too. Somehow that restaurant opened with 15 spots, and that's what we have to find out how it happened.
Understood.
Once we know that, we could.
So to be clear, there's 15 spots now for the restaurant, and you're proposing 15 total, including the garages?
Yes. So 15 remain. Four will be dedicated for, no, 15 total.
Oh, because you're losing the spots.
And we had to, and then we restructured. So 15 total. So the, and four would be dedicated via the garages, right? Four would be dedicated via the garages to the new residential units. So the restaurant would be operating with 11, and each of the residential units would have their one own dedicated space.
This is very, this can be solid, this is complex, and we need the history of how this happened.
More than that, typically, typically the CEO, in addition to figuring out what happened in the past, also determines zoning applying. And this board is not supposed to determine zoning applying, so it's typically up to the CEO to say, yeah, it's going to need a variance, and they would, you know, they would do this or that.
Or also, I might want, you might want $4,000 for the four garage spots, you know, to add that. Put the number back, where, I don't know.
And I would also point out, just a further wrinkle that is not uncommon at all. Assuming that they do have to go to the ZBA for one reason or another, the two things that are kind of funky is that the, most planning boards want the ZBA to first figure out whether the variance is, because it's not going to come to this board until the zoning is straightened out. That's one thing that the ZBA can do. But also, this is, this is not a type one action, so you don't have to do this, but typically, what, I don't know, what we must probably want to do is have a coordinated review, which means somebody's got to declare a lead agency. And typically, typically, the planning board is going to want to have lead agency, and by declaring it, or by, if the ZBA was to declare it, they need to actually have to contest it. But so typically, the planning board would send notice and intent to be lead agency. I'll talk to Ryan and see, and Lydia and see what's typically, and the CEOs and see what's typically been done. But those are the two wrinkles, and so.
We shouldn't do the agency.
No. Probably not, let the CEO figure out what's needed, and then it may come up to this board in a couple of weeks to figure out if you want to do a notice of intent to be lead, even if it's got to go to the ZBA first.
And usually, you have to have a determination before the variance is adopted.
That's right. The reason why, the reason why.
So we get a little more front end work.
The ZBA must have a seeker determination one way or another. Typically, a neg dac, but we don't want to presuppose. So that, that, that neg dac or EIS has to be done before the ZBA can issue its variance. And the variance has to be done before we do site plan, but we may end up doing the seeker review if we do look for lead agency. So that hasn't confused you, but this.
So nothing to do tonight.
Those are moving.
So I guess, just, yeah, I heard, I did hear one, I would love comments on this as it's shown because I think you are seeing new information. And I did hear, again, and we heard this at the last meeting, the front-facing garages, which are absolutely necessary for the size of the space. So I think, but identifying that as a concern of this board, right? That they are facing the front of the lot, even though they are hidden behind an existing structure, they are still facing the street. So making sure visibility of those garage doors from the street is shielded.
The CEO can also work that in as well.
Look at the garage door.
If I've soft pedaled the problem of the visibility of the, of the garages, and the CEO has a different view of it, we'll hear from him as well on that, you know, whether, 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 in other words, the folks on the CPC who are, who are concerned about the garages have a better sense of what the zoning law actually says than I do. It's possible.
You might want that to look more like a village house garage, you know, door with windows or, you know, not just a big aluminum door, industrial.
Yeah, like garage doors are probably not going to come in.
No.
So windows make it look more residential in character. You have some recessed. I was thinking, first of all, you have only a 22-foot aisle, and you need 24 feet to back out of a garage, according to our code.
That, that has to be a 24-hour, a 24-foot lane?
Lane, yes.
Okay.
If you're having perpendicular parking that comes out into that space, under code, it has to be 24 feet. So that means either the building has to go back two feet, which it looked like you had from the setback, or the garage within the building has to go back two feet. So the garage door, it gives you 24 feet to back out.
I mean, the garage is the whole, the garage portion of it is the whole ground floor. What we're showing is that outline is just the car, but you're saying.
You're going to have to push the whole building back in 24 feet or cut more off that landscape dial in, which I don't like the idea because that's what provides your screening from the back door to the garages.
Okay.
So really, you should do your homework on the wetland issue, which we started, started with an hour ago, talking about whether you can push those back. It is a little more space before you go off the cliff.
And if, if indeed the parking is an issue, which might be, because you're, I thought you were providing for more spaces.
We originally were, the last time we came before you, we were adding a total of three spaces.
Oh, that's nice.
The, the client, the applicant would like to keep, you see now where we are keeping part of that rear patio where there are existing trees that provide shade. They're still going to get rid of the smoker that's back there, but they wanted to keep that outdoor space, and so that's why we lost a few spaces there. Is they wanted to keep the tree. Because that's the entrance of the, and that provides some screening of folks walking into the building, into the restaurant, of kind of looking back at those units. So they wanted to keep that greenery. So we'll look at that.
I think there's a decent likelihood that you're not going to get that big of areas. And there's two options.
In the video blue, it's the same, same as a variance.
Cut back your patio.
Yeah.
So that you can come close to what you had before.
Yeah.
Or lose a couple of units and put parking there without the burden of requirement spaces for those two extra units.
Or pay the fee.
Or pay the pocket move. If that's agreeable to.
Well, you can only pay up to 50%, and it seems like you're over that.
But not if you're not subtracting from an existing condition that's been in operation for how many ever.
You can make that case, but I'm just saying.
You have to make that case that can.
Yeah, it's, you're cutting back a lot of parking.
Well, this is, these are issues for the CEO and their wisdom.
Some histories, that's some research.
This board's not going to do zoning determinations.
Yep. Okay, so I, I think besides thinking about ways of the, of the garage, and that being the, I guess, is there any other initial comments? This is the first you're seeing of three stories and proposed architecture.
What is the surface of the building? Hardy board or?
The materials are board and batten and then nickel gap siding. If we get eight of nine.
I personally don't like mixed siding, where you go vertical and horizontal. I think that doesn't look right. So, and I would, I personally don't like the in-and-out sort of architecture. You know, if you want to stick the two, farthest units out and then have the two units in, make it more simple. I think this looks a little too jagged edge to me. Too much, that's my personal opinion. I don't know what other people feel, but it looks too much like a sawtooth thing. I, I like simple facades, not more than complex, busy facades. The windows look a little small for the size of the.
John, when you say you like, are you talking generally or are you talking HDO as in, you know?
Yeah.
Consistency with historic.
Yeah, but site plan generally, you know? We, we provide architectural.
You go across, then you go up and down again. It's, you know, it should look more like a house. Would have consistent siding.
Yeah, you have more of a mess, you know? And you might have a cross gable or, you know, two cross gables, that's, but you have four cross gables, that's getting too much like.
Busy.
You know, I don't know, a standard suburban townhouse.
Okay.
So think about how you make this fit in a historic district because even though it's not on the street, it's still in the historic district.
Sort of siding like a house, garage doors like a house, you know, to windows and.
But we're not, they're not single-family homes around here. We're not, it's not a house, right? It's a, it's a multifamily.
But even the multifamily in the village are more house-like.
Okay.
Right.
I think, you know, the massing of it is, is fine, right? Like the three-story aspect of it, the size of the building doesn't feel wrong. It's, it's just difficult, I think, I'm having a hard time providing any specific guidance on, on what to do with it other than it feels more suburban than something from the village of Ryan Beck. And I'm afraid to say, you know, change up the facade materials or roof lines or something, because then I'm worried we're going to get, you know, the next reaction would be to create something that looks like it's also suburban, but it's trying to be something that looks more urban. So maybe the place I would suggest you go for inspiration is, is a non-residential building as, as inspiration. Maybe something with the right massing that looks more like a multifamily building in the village.
You mean like a flat roof?
Maybe like a flat roof, or, you know, there's lots of multifamily or multi-story buildings throughout the village center where I could buy the argument that maybe there was a little factory building back there, a little mill building, or maybe there was some other office building that you've converted to residential rather than you dropped a townhome out of an airplane. And I don't, you know, I don't mean to be insulting in any way, but I think just there's this sort of fine line between a village where, you know, those buildings might have existed, right? Like it's sort of logical. I'd see something behind it and say, oh, I wonder what that is? A carriage house, or, oh, there's a drop-off there. I wonder if that had some sort of manufacturing use in the past, or there was maybe a water course that ran through there, and they used water power, or there was something involved.
One building with four apartments.
Right? So something along that line might actually help you from a cost perspective too, with less roof lines or something. So simpler might actually be better, provided it's not sort of whitewashed with vinyl siding with vinyl siding or hardy plank even. You know, maybe there's some material that feels more substantial and village-like.
I would look at carriage houses in the village too, large carriage houses as inspiration, cause this is the classic carriage house position with garage doors. The carriage houses had garage doors on the first floor. I would look around and look for examples of large, larger scaled carriage houses and what they look like.
Or even something like, there was once a lumberyard in the village, right? So like a building like that might have had some loading in the bottom and you'd say, oh, I could see that might have been where they, they opened the doors to receive deliveries and things. So there's, there's other examples of garages on purpose that aren't just for residential.
Yeah.
You're sitting in a lumberyard, that's what this used to be.
That's right.
This was the original William Swanson.
It's a three-story building.
That's right.
That was pretty large. I mean, it was running all the way down to that house.
I know, it's a picture.
At least in the building, it's spot. Yeah, what was Herrick's, I think, that hay and all kinds of...
Fran, Fran Herrick's, like Ray Millers.
They made some machines here for a while.
Okay, that's very, I think that's helpful. I appreciate all the comments there on that. Okay, so I will start, Ryan, I don't know. I'll work with you tomorrow and see if you need more information on what's provided to get that to the CEO. But I think we'll get the, the parking matter resolved and then hopefully come back to you guys October 1st to do the...
At least that way.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
Thank you.
And screening along the property edges will be helpful between the parts of us. Low screening entries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item on your agenda is...
You gotta go back up to the hub.
Victoria.
Yeah.
Right.
They didn't need to be here, actually. The message shouldn't get there now.
No, yeah. So, um, this is the hub.
Yes, so we have the hub and then we have, oh, let's start with the hub.
We have two documents from a prior meeting, your documents. The, the site visit report, you guys, and...
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David. So where would you like to start, Victoria?
I mean, I can just explain what we're asking for and then we can talk through the site visit.
Okay.
The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment. If you can pull out the PDF. When the project was originally approved, it was proposed that they would keep all of the existing light fixtures in the parking lot. And upon reflection, while everything is dug up, they've decided that they do wanna replace all the existing fixtures in the back. On the graveyard side, there are two fixtures, which are those old shoebox style fixtures. So they wanna replace them in the same locations. And then along the opposite side, there are four light poles that they wanna replace. And the fixture is shown in the detail provided on the plan. And then there's two other changes to the lights. I think the plan you have up now, is this Darren's mark up?
This is my mark up.
Oh, okay.
Uh, when you say change of fixtures, so swapping out existing fixtures with the fixtures that were previously approved to be new fixtures on the site.
These, these were previously approved for their other parts of the site. So now all the light fixtures on the site were matched.
Do we have, did we have that from a prior meeting? And we didn't get to it, do we have that document?
No, you should, you should have been in for section approval.
I don't know if Christian ever sent it to me.
Okay, one, one each, okay, we'll pass them down. Thank you. Have any more?
I mean, we made a submission.
That is just three copies?
That's, I, that's what I got on August 17th.
From Kristen?
Uh, no, from your office. But this is Christian Drew's, sorry, from your outside?
Yes, this, this is the follow-up to our meeting outside. This is what they're asking to be amended. So then there are two changes, which aren't just swapping out the light poles. If you look at the rear of the, it used to be Hundred Mile, like the retail store of Greenoff and Bates, they're proposing a new light pole be added there. And that light pole would be shielded on both sides so that the light only shines into the parking spaces. We did give Mr. Greenoff advance notice. And then where the, at the end of that row of parking spaces, there's currently a long curb that comes out with a light pole right at the end of it, which makes it...
Right, there's staying there.
Correct. You, you walk out and then you walk into the light pole. So they're proposing to move the light pole back and then taper into a ramp so that people can get onto the curb more easily.
That curb is very steep in spots. Gonna be good. So those are the changes?
Those are the proposed changes.
Was it Jeff and John went?
I went.
Darren went.
This is, I think, consistently what we agreed to on the site was fine.
Did you wanna look at your...
I think the only requirements that we were still a little eye with and roll unsure of was to shield, whether you could put the lights so close to the property line and shield them from the neighbors. Or, and we would have some assurance from the neighbors that they were okay with that, or that it would be 100% shielded.
Right, so I think they added a night, a note that, about the shielding to the plan. Adequate shielding shall be provided on all fixtures located along with during any property lines to ensure conformance with the section. So...
Where is that?
It's under the site lighting schematic plan notes.
Which bullet? On the upper left? Yep.
Which one is?
Which, which bullet?
The fourth, the fourth bullet.
Okay, so you're saying you gotta do...
That's the last sentence of the fourth bullet.
Right. To make sure that no more than point one foot, foot candles go beyond that fence. And is there a way that we would be assured that that would happen?
I mean, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't give a CEO...
Okay, somebody with a light meter's gonna go out there or something? Or normally we get a lighting, you know?
Oh, a, a, a living plan, yeah.
Automatic plan, and we're not getting that here. But if, if that's there and we agree to it and the village has a way of making sure that it's works.
Based on the fixture, it looks like that the approach might be to put a shield in the back of it, so on two sides.
On two sides.
On two sides of it, so maybe that's just something that Justin can review before you install it, just to say, okay, this, this is how this would work.
And that's, to me, would seem to work.
I would think it would work too, but just before it goes up, that way Justin can say, yeah, I took a look.
And this fixture has the, the element up in the top, so it goes down. And you decided two would be enough on this side to replace the two that are there?
They, yeah, instead of proposing another one, they just wanted to replace in kind.
And the curb studs you see are pushed up on those two lights so that people don't run into the, to the light fixture.
Victoria, do you know, these, the fixture actually has glass in, in the frame below. The reason I ask is cause, because at Vassar College, they just put this fixture in. I don't know if anybody's been through there at night recently, but they didn't put the glass in, or maybe they have yet to put the glass in. And it's very strange, because what happens is they fill with cobwebs and then like, cause the light hits the cobwebs, it has this sort of like sparkly effect that I think is not intended.
Yeah, it could be cool, but...
It, it, it could be cool, but it's sort of very, very distracting and strange. So, I know this was approved previously, but just a comment to Mr. Bender would be, you know, take a look at Vassar, if it doesn't have the glass, you might seriously consider the glass.
Okay, I can't tell.
Yeah, it's hard to tell. The one looks like...
Are there variegated glasses for our approval?
I mean, it, I would say the board, if you saw the Vassar ones, you strongly want the glass.
Yeah, and if, if you...
I don't know if they, this model that you...
Right, you would, then we could say or equivalent model that would have glass.
I mean, I assume the ones that are already approved have already been ordered. But we could fix it for the new ones that have been ordered.
You might have to go out and buy glass.
You might have to, you might have to put some panels in.
The other thing about it too is when you look up at it, they're, they're LEDs and they're extremely intense. So the same thing at Vassar, when you get the right angle and you can actually see, you know, the bulb itself or...
That's interesting, without the glass, it's like a modern interpretation of a carriage light.
And it might just be a totally different thing at Vassar that's intentional, but it's, it's a really interesting kind of mix on that campus. So I just bring it up because, you know, I'd hate to see you install all these and then realize that you might have the same issue.
Yeah, as you know, Mr. Bender is very particular about his properties anyways, so I will follow up with him. I'm sure he would prefer the ones that look more old-fashioned.
And it might be like just a model number difference and somebody flipped the wrong model number at Vassar and you can do more than here.
Okay.
So are we happy with the two changes? We have a motion to approve the amended site plan?
A motion to approve it with the provision that we would prefer glass in the light fixtures.
Dan's seconded it?
Or equivalent, right?
Or, or the equivalent model.
Dan seconded, it was a favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the other one was the referral from Ken about 23 South Street.
Victoria's not here for that. Uh, 23 South Street, you guys resolved at the September 3rd meeting. Uh, what Victoria is for, is here for is for 48 West Market Street. This was an oversight on my part, as I attempted to get all my eggs in one basket before I left out of town. So this did not make it on the agenda per se for tonight. However, this is a discussion item. Hopefully you have had a chance to look at the documents included. Uh, but I can give us a synopsis, or Victoria, if you wanna give us a synopsis.
I can give a synopsis, and if you need more time, you need more time. But essentially, they wanna take down the existing siding, uncover the wood siding underneath and restore it. Similar treatment to what they did with 118 West Market, East Market, yeah.
I, yeah, I still, I still got...
And there are some pictures, if you wanna pull the pictures up just so everyone can organize themselves.
I haven't had a chance to look at any of these. I only came in like lunchtime today.
I went out and looked at the building before the meeting. And there's a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. What, what happens to the shutters? They're vinyl too. So I'm hoping that you either replace them with original type shutters or take them off. And there's two spotlights here that reflect right down on the sidewalk. And there's a big, what do they call those? Side, on the side of the building, broadcast lighting.
A flood?
Yeah, it's a floodlight, attached to the, uh, wall park, floodlight.
Oh, okay.
And it seems to me we have to get rid of all three of those as part of any approval.
Oh, I see, there's like a halogen, yeah.
It's big.
Is that left there from...
Oh, that's this thing?
No, that's, that's actually...
The CPA office?
Yeah, I mean, that hasn't been added.
Yeah, that's on the Mirbo side, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's not acceptable, and the two floodlights.
Will there be enough parking in the spaces at night for Mirbo?
Well, I think you could replace it with something that is compliant with the code.
Okay, so...
Goes down and looks more like a gooseneck light or some other light that, that lights up that space without broadcasting light.
Is this going to still be an office?
It's two apartments.
So do you need the, the sign hanger?
I'll ask him.
It's a ground floor apartment?
I believe so.
And it's like that now? It was, that used to be a business, didn't it?
It was Bogus and Grady Academy. When they sold it to him, he turned it into, upstairs was an apartment. And I don't know if downstairs was another apartment or a business, but it was, it was two distinct tenants in there. There was no sign of any kind of new business, so, you know, it's been very quiet since. It was quiet with Bogus and Grady, it just, you know... I went and looked at it, and it's got vinyl siding, it's got plastic shutters. There's two, left and right, central AC. I don't know if he's planning on putting mini splits in to get heat in there. There's, on the left side, there's, uh, his oil tank comes out. I guess it's on both sides, so he's probably got two, two furnaces down there, two boilers.
This is the left side?
There was no infrastructure improvements at this point. It was really just an exterior.
Siding?
Yes.
The back porch, the horizontal boards don't look to be current building code compliant.
The porch is all vinyl too. But I don't know if he has any intentions to...
If that was not part of his proposal?
Now, the flooring, it looks good. It looks like, you know, some sort of teak or, you know...
Oh, you're talking about porch columns and things?
It's the columns and the balustrade are all...
Classic.
Yeah, now it's, it's well done. You have to sort of go up and knock on it or look at the seams to tell it is. So it's, you know, I'm not sure that he has to replace it because it, it looks real. Uh, but I thought the lighting should be updated and the shutter should be dealt with.
It's reasonable, cause that's all gonna come off with the vinyl anyway. So rather than put what's there back, just upgrade those few things or take them away.
So would I bring this back to him? If, taking away the shutters, you'd be okay with if you didn't replace them at all?
Well, obviously, I think I'd prefer to have wood shutters on there, at least on the front side.
But you prefer nothing to the vinyl?
Yeah, you can't put the vinyl on.
And they don't, they don't look big enough that they would actually...
Just a lot of shudders.
Right, they're not sized properly.
It's supposed to be, be closing the... I'd have it now, it sort of looks worse than no shutting. They have to restore the plaque on the building.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a nice looking building. I mean, I think it'll be great if it has good siding on, it'll be, it'll be much nicer.
Yeah.
And like I said, I can live with the porch the way it is. It's vinyl, but it is what it is, and it's not, it's good quality. The only thing I didn't like are the, are the spotlights.
Yeah, and the sign is...
Potential.
It's now an apartment.
So the board has a choice. You can make a motion to approve with the conditions to address the shutters, light fixtures, and I guess remove the bracket that was utilized for the previous tenant or the previous accounting office. Or you can table this and vote at the October 1 meeting and have it come, come back.
I'm okay just putting the things that we said.
I think we should see the light fixtures if they're gonna replace that one. Yeah, that's the only thing I, you know, I, I trust this applicant has a record of doing good work.
He did great work on the one up here.
Yeah, so my guess is everything will come out good. He'll find a nice fixture and everything else. But it seems to me we might wanna at least look at the fixtures.
So an additional consideration for the board is to add an additional condition that the applicant provide an example of gooseneck lighting. If the board seems satisfactory, they don't have to come back October 1st if there's still some, uh, it's not clear on the exact model or type of gooseneck that the applicant needs to return for an additional approval of that lighting.
That sounds good.
If, if he intends to put it back, there might be a situation where he decides it's not needed to and he'd need to come back.
Victoria, what is this, you're gonna expose the original wood siding.
Correct, underneath, they've peeled back some pieces, there is wood siding. And, and they hope to restore it. But as what happened with the other one, they did have to replace some pieces that were rotted.
No, I trust, I trust the lies, I mean, it was just good work.
Well, if, if, we should say this because it's come up on other things. If in turn, if indeed they go in there and because of who knows what's under the vinyl and they have to do more than just replace it in kind, they have to...
They have to call them back.
Then they have to come back to us to get approval if they wanna change the configuration of the existing siding or, or if it's all rotted and they, you know, they have to take out chunks of the wood or, you know, like what happened on Chestnut Street.
Well, I think what we asked for in here was for restoration of existing siding along with replacement of historically appropriate six-inch wood clavering siding where needed.
Right, and if that's what happens. But if there's anything that changes to the building itself and has to because of rot or, you know, an old porch that was buried under there that you have to replace a window or whatever, then they have to come back to us. If it's anything more than just replacing the side, the vinyl siding with existing wood siding or in kind fixing of existing wood siding.
The chimney on the left side is just, it's not in this picture, but it just...
Cement block.
Cement block, actually. So, I mean, he's, he's used old brick on the Chestnut Street or Livingston Street house that he, he did, or painted or something, I don't know. That could be improved.
Yeah, but you can't ask that, I don't think.
Just point it out though.
Yeah, yeah. Now, we would prefer a brick chimney and we would prefer, I would prefer to see ground floor retail or commercial of some sort rather than apartment. And I know it's at the fringe of the business district, but it is still on the walking route.
It's in the, yeah, I think it's in a special sensitivity overlay.
Oh, is it? I think this is in the village center district. And I'm not sure.
It's in, I don't have a map.
I have it, but it's somewhere in green though.
I know.
To me, it looks like it's in the, it's the one...
It's got like a chain.
It's hard to tell. It might be in the commercial portion of the SSL. Cause it's so small, you can't, you can't tell without the hatchet.
I had stuff, I gotta clean this thing out.
So I have six or seven conditions. Do we wanna clean the conditions up or what other six or seven conditions?
Do you wanna re-site them just now?
So, uh, the shutters.
Either replace or remove?
Replace or remove, and if replaced, they have to be wood-based. The floodlights need to be removed. And if the light on the eastern side is to be replaced, then that must be gooseneck lighting approved by the CEO or at least reviewed by the planning board.
I don't know about gooseneck, I think a complying light fixture.
An appropriate light fixture.
Yeah, that fits within the historic district and applies with the directional requirements of the code.
Remove bracket. And then address the chimney, if possible.
No, I would, I would just say, our preference would be that eventually the chimney gets faced or removed. No, I would, I would just say, our preference would be that eventually the chimney gets faced or removed.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like Utah oil fill pipe, Michael.
Yeah, there's, there's one on each side, so maybe he's got two boilers or furnaces for whole floors.
Yeah, it's not a fireplace. It's a oil vent.
Yeah, but maybe someday he'll upgrade it with that.
Yeah.
Usually, once he starts something, he goes all in. He does a good job.
Well, that's what sort of, in the long run, I think, this, it'll progressively get better.
Yeah, this is very, very old. That whole row is one of some of the original houses.
So then I have.
Well, there's just a hair on this one underneath the.
Siding, come back if.
There's, there's cheap lattice underneath that porch that's broken.
The rear porch, you mean, Michael?
No, the front porch.
Oh, I see it. Yeah, it almost looks like that plastic stuff.
It is.
So replace with wood lattice?
Yeah. And the, the back porch, you know, that looks.
He's not, he's not proposing any changes to the back.
That's not building code, I don't think, of the. And you can see it from Mirbo, so.
You can't see it from the street.
I don't know.
Well, again, I mean, he's not, he's not changing it at this point. If he does, we'll close up.
You can just share with them.
I'll share your thoughts.
So did we?
And our long-term preference would be a commercial underground floor, but we're not requiring anything.
So did we make a motion?
I don't think there was actually one. I'll make.
But it's not a motion.
But those conditions.
Yes.
Five conditions.
You made the motion?
Actually, I think it's six with the lattice, right? I made a motion, Justin.
So you made the motion?
I said. I think the siding repair, substantial window repair replacement, come back to the board. It's five, and then the lattice was six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you. I have one additional referral from the ZEO.
Hey, Jeff, just, the press wasn't here when you said what you said at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to point that out in case you wanted to mention anything again.
Are they gonna look at the tape, right?
They're gonna look at the tape, my God.
Well, let the press hear this. What I said was, before we begin, I'd like to say something. During our last meeting, I allowed my composure to fail, and I made an outburst, which was inappropriate, and I want to apologize for that. Any member of a public board can tell you that you can expect a full range of dialogue during meetings, from polite civility to nasty barbs to personal insults, but I do believe that my role as a public board member, my conduct should be held to a higher standard. And in that moment, I failed that higher standard. There is no justification, no excuse for my outburst, and for that, I apologize unconditionally to everyone. That's what I said.
Just in case, because the meeting started at a strange time.
Yeah.
Are the meetings moving to six, moving forward?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
The lady, yeah, I mean, you know, we're running.
All right.
We'll, we'll see, we'll see about that. I don't know if that's set in stone yet.
Thank you.
Chair. So.
Thank you, Eric.
I, I vote for six.
Building Department referral?
Getting back to the referral, is that a referral from the zoning enforcement officer? This is for eight through 10 Chestnut. Specifically coming back, or, actually, this is separate.
Eight, 10, Chestnut.
This is the Juliette Falconi? Who's, who's the applicant, right?
Yeah, the applicant is Samantha Comey.
Oh, oh, okay.
They want to address the garage. So they have submitted three building permit application. One application to replace the garage door. They propose a style. The next application is to replace the existing windows.
In the garage?
In the garage. And then the next is to repair the foundation and put on a new roof, going from asphalt currently to a metal roof.
I think we'd like to see that on October 1.
We can finish with my, we saw the plans beforehand.
That's the answer.
Yes.
But the, the garage itself is staying the same size.
As far as I know, what's detailed in the three applications that were submitted, the size is staying the same. However, you may want further explanation of what they mean by repairing the foundation. Does that mean the foundation gets bigger? Does the, whatever?
October 1.
But just to refresh my memory, was that something that we determined was a contributing structure? Because that was where they wanted to do the change to an AD unit, right?
So I think when dealing with contributing structures, that specifically when you're demolishing or removing them under chapter 64, any structure in the historic overlay district, what they're changing, I believe, needs to come to you guys for review.
Got it.
I may have been working for weeks on the garage across the street that they fixed the roof on, and they're not putting an apartment in there, but they're stabilizing the building, which they said the building was gonna fall down. And I've been watching them, been there for weeks now. And they put up, you know, like two by four walls, you know, to hold things up, and they're in there changing.
Across the street from you, not across the street.
Yeah, he's talking about Livingston.
The blue, the blue house, that doesn't have a blue garage. They're in there stabilizing the garage, and that was what Ken, I think, did we talk about that? Or did Ken approve that they could stabilize the building? But the other thing, the variance for the accessory apartment, that's all expired.
Correct.
Yeah, and so they have to come back, but they're in there, I think they finished, and they're up there with a crane doing the other things to the blue building, which we approved, fixing the various things, so they're fixing, which we approved, and they're stabilizing the building because a lot of the beams on the side, the whole thing out, are rotten. And they did a beautiful job on that roof.
Yeah.
And so they're just working in there, but I, you know, I keep peeking in there, and I look, why? No, they're really stabilizing.
Did everybody see the new black house on Parsonage?
Carson, with Carson North or South? Where?
Where?
Uh, just between Livingston and East Market Street, Mizarella's house. Remember, he came in, put the new door on the front?
Yes.
Oh, he painted it all black.
I haven't been around.
That's the house where they had like crown molding around the front door?
They had very strange molding around the door.
That front door is so.
The door is not what we approved.
No, and they painted it black.
Not the door, but the, the whole house, trim it all.
Then a third or fourth black house.
I can think of only one more, but maybe I'm wrong.
It's so 2023.
Well, I guess once Ryan catches. Maybe we could approve some of that.
Not for nothing, but I think we should recommend for the, when they do their code updates, to remove black as, or near black as a color.
I know it's been introduced in a way. We use the colors, but we should have some control over something.
Well, we have it against fluorescent, iridescent, neon.
That was after the neon house down the block.
Then just add black.
Add black. And there might be other colors, you know.
And then the whole, the, the house that was at 20, was it 22? Livingston, it's white and black, black shutters, black windows, you know, black.
Yes. I mean, that isn't as bad as all black in my mind, but it's, it's still, so 2023 is.
John, did you bring up a fence earlier? Did you bring up a fence you wanted to talk about earlier on Chestnut or something?
Well, there is a fence on Chestnut Street. It's on a corner lot, and they put it right up against the sidewalk, six feet. Now, it's in the back of the house, but it's a corner lot, so I'm not sure how that works. So it's behind the front plane of the house, but not the front plane of, if both corners are considered fronts for fencing purposes. It's right up against the sidewalk. In fact, you know, they, even when they put the footings in, they put all the debris from the halls on the sidewalk and left it there.
You just send me an ad, an address, and I'll have Justin begin to it?
Yeah, they're painting it right now. It's on the corner of Chestnut and Parsonage.
Yeah, Justin tonight told me that he will be here shortly, three days a week, all day.
All right.
That's good.
That'll be great.
That's a six-foot fence?
It's a six-foot wood fence, yes.
Yeah.
You know, a solid wood fence.
I put hostas all alone in front of those four ham lots to stop people from, you know, walking in, but they take the bags and just throw them in. And then I rake leaves, I chop down the hostas in the fall.
Yeah.
There's always plastic bags.
Like dog food bags?
Yeah. Because it's a no man's land. It's behind the house. It's all the way up towards my neighbor. And it's like 30 or 40 feet of just, and I have to plow and mow the curbs through. I'm gonna mow the little grasses dead until it rains. It never happened again.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.